We have a quorum, so we can get started Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, I'll call this meeting to order. This is the August fifteenth special meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Good morning, you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning Supervisors Hume, Frost, Desmond Kennedy.
Eric.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you.
Okay, so this meeting is not being broadcast live, but it is being recorded and it will be published online for the public after the meeting is concluded. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first come, first served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda or off agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being. Can you hear? Okay. To make a comment, fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments. And for each agenda or off agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name for each speaker. When you hear your name, please come to the podium to make your comments. Trying to scroll down, sorry about that. You may also send written comments to boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Your comment will be routed to the board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act, or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance, or you can contact us by phone or email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you very much, and now would everybody please take a big bite of food and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Villanueva.
Thank you Chair Kennedy. Just a couple of quick comments and brief comments. I know the team has put together a fantastic binder there for you and we'll go into much more detail as it relates to the agenda. But just, I think this is an incredibly important topic that we sit and have a discussion about related to behavioral health services. And, and as we touch on these things, some of the things that we'll be touching on is the continuum of care overview. We'll have our host, which is, this is a fantastic facility from UC Davis Mine Institute, provide us with a, an introduction to their program. We'll talk about behavioral health special initiatives, and then break for lunch, and then we'll have behavioral health new initiatives. And I think some of the things on that particular topic related to Prop 1, SB 43, and others will hit on the key areas I know the board's very interested in. This is, like I said before, this is an exciting topic to talk about, and I appreciate the board taking, for the most part, the entire day to have this discussion of behavioral health services. In my, Supervisor Kennedy and I were talking about, in my tenure here at the county, I don't think we've ever spent this much time talking about this particular topic and going over it. And, and hopefully we'll get to touch on many of the acronym SUPs that the behavioral health staff use, whether that's FIT, or CRACK, or CWRT, or HART, or FIT, or, you know, and the list goes on and on, CSUs, and a whole bunch of other things that they actually touch on. And, and they'll take a much, a deep dive into that and for you, and I think this will be, again, incredibly helpful for us to do this. And as we prepared for this and talking to Supervisor Kennedy, we talked about how on any given Tuesday, we have items on our consent agenda that, that bring forward behavioral health contracts or grants or something, or things of that nature. And just, I asked folks to pull me some numbers together, but just this calendar year, there was almost a hundred contracts for $327 million worth of contracts and expenditure authority, and their budget includes about $489 million, which is approximately about 70% of the Department of Health Services budget. So with that, I think this retreat, I believe this retreat will be incredibly valuable opportunity to see how all these systems are connected. And for us to take a step back, look at a big picture to ensure that our investments are part of a cohesive countywide strategy that truly serves our residents. Lastly, I would just like to say, you know, thank you for our host, the UC Davis Mine Institute, our panelists, and we'll have other panelists come up early. Dr. Quist, Director Steve, or Director Tim Lutz, and Deputy County Executive Siobhan Katari. And lastly, can't leave out Flo and her team. This turned out to be a fantastic event. I know we show up and it looks like it's without stress and compromise, but I know Flo spends a lot of time and, and does a lot of great things to pull this all together. So, thank you for that, and thank you Flo for your time. So, thank you Supervisor.
Thank you Mr. Villanueva, and I just want to add that, you know, as Board Chair, one of the things that those of you who've been Chair in the past know that one of the privileges you have is to help guide the, what the topic of the annual retreat is. And I looked at this and, you know, we look at behavioral health constantly on our, as Mr. Villanueva said, you know, in our consent calendar so often. And we talk about it, you know, under the auspices of budget, we talk about it under new programs, we talk about it state mandates, federal mandates, we talk about it when we address homelessness. But never before that I, that I can recall have we ever talked about it in a, in a way that really shows the big picture and, and shows in a comprehensive way everything that we're doing as a county. And so I think this is incredibly valuable for the public, but also for, for those of us up here. I have thrown myself into this subject for 10 years, and while going over the materials, I've learned quite a bit. So I want to thank the staff, particularly, all of the staff, but particularly David Villanueva, Siobhan Katari, Tim Lutz, and Ryan Quist, who met with me many times as we went over this, and really, you know, spearheaded and guided this whole process today. So I thank you all for indulging, and I look forward to a very productive and educational day. With that, we'll go to the first item.
For item number one, this is the Behavioral Health Services Care Continuum Overview.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to take a moment and just thank you for this opportunity to, to review this material. I talked to some of my colleagues in other counties, and they're green with envy to, to have the opportunity to spend this much time to brief you all on the amazing work that is going on among my team. I think it was probably during the pandemic that we really took up a new approach of advocating for us to be recognized as healthcare. Behavioral health, it's in the name, but often people think about behavioral health as maybe something slightly different than healthcare. But behavioral health is healthcare, and I think more than ever, as we came through the pandemic, we recognized that, that it's essential to how people are able to be successful in the community, how people are able to thrive in their activities, in their work, in their relationships. And so we're really excited to talk about the, the various work. And, and I know that a number of you see me from time to time. I really am so proud to be able to have the opportunity for you to meet and hear from my team members as well. These are the folks that make this amazing work happen day in and day out. And so I'm really excited for, for you to have an opportunity to meet them and hear about the work that they're doing. And so if I could just start off and have them introduce each, themselves, I'll first ask Kelly to introduce herself.
Good morning, I'm Kelly Weaver. I'm the Deputy Director with Behavioral Health.
And then we'll start over here with Ananta, and we'll go down the rest of the line there.
Hello, I'm Ananta Panyala from the Mental Health Treatment Center in Patient.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Ed Juuk. I'm a Health Program Manager with our Substance Use Prevention and Treatment Services unit.
And I'm Sherri Green. I support our Children's Mental Health Services as well as our homeless initiatives for folks who are dealing with mental health conditions.
Hello, I'm Stephanie Kelly, Division Manager with Behavioral Health, working with our Adult Outpatient, Justice Involved, and Crisis Continuum Services.
All right, and we'll get an opportunity for one more introduction in, in a moment. We're going to start off, Kelly's going to sort of orient us to the, the agenda for today. And then, and then I thought it only fitting for us to start off to hear from one of our frontline workers, a peer that is doing the hard and amazing and just inspiring work as a part of our Homeless Engagement and Response Team to sort of set the tone for, for the material that we're going to present today. So take it away Kelly.
Thank you Ryan. Good morning. It is a pleasure to be here today, sharing with you the tremendous work of behavioral health with our sisters, departments, stakeholders, communities, and those we're privileged to serve. I would like, I would like to start by saying thank you to our board for the years of support. Without your support, none of this would be possible. Today we have a wonderful presentation for you. As our team was preparing, we felt we had so much more we wanted to share. So we developed for you a series of behavioral health highlights, or what we are calling the One Pager. Unfortunately, one of the, one of the One Pages we really wanted to highlight for you today was unintentionally omitted, and it was regarding our permanent supported housing. But we have an amazing team, and so they actually brought a copy of it, and we actually sent it to Flo, who will put it as part of the record. And so we'll, each of you will get a, a copy of it. It has a QR code right here that brings you to our webpage. That's dedicated for our permanent supported housing, and it has a, on the webpage has a copy of our housing portfolio, actually has a copy here. And it is absolutely fabulous. It has the, really, over two decades worth of work of all the permanent supported housing projects that we have done. Beautiful photos of the housing properties and information that I think you would all love to see. It's the investment over the years and all the number of, the people that we have housed. So wanted to bring that to your attention. All right. Okay, and next, our Behavioral Health Mission. Our mission is to provide a culturally competent system of care that promotes holistic recovery, optimum health, and resiliency. We envision a community where persons from diverse backgrounds across the life continuum have the opportunity to experience optimum wellness. And David did a brilliant job of going over the agenda, so I'll just quickly walk through today's agenda. As David mentioned, we're doing an overview in session one of the Behavioral Health Continuum. Session two will provide an overview, or you'll get an overview of the UC Davis Mine Institute. Session three will, you'll get to hear about special initiatives. And then during our lunch break, we will have the honor of having a presentation from our Youth Advisory Board. And then wrapping up, we'll have an overview of Behavioral Health New Initiatives. And at this time, I'd like to invite Sherri to introduce our peer.
Hi, everybody. I also want to say thank you for inviting us to share. I did say my name is Sherri Green, and I am a resident of Councilmember Frost, or Board of Supervisors member Frost. And I'm going to introduce Amy Kimmons, who is one of our peer specialists. She started in the heart program last year and quickly showed how amazing she was with the clients and earned a promotion to a senior peer. She is a mom, and she has lived experience, and she's going to share more about her story and how that works with our Homeless Engagement and Response Team, and how it has an impact on the, the clients that you serve. Take it away.
Hi, good morning. Thanks for having me here. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. So, my name is Amy. I'm originally from.
Amy, what you do every day is more important and more difficult than what you're about to do. So, take a deep breath.
Okay.
And don't worry about it.
Well, I appreciate you. So, I guess I'll give you a little bit of backstory about myself. I'm 36. I'm originally from Minnesota. I had a pretty good upbringing, like my family had good jobs. My older sister, she was in and out of rehab, which I didn't really understand. My family is very old school in the sense of like, they didn't believe in therapy or mental health. So anything that happened at home was supposed to stay at home. I learned that very quickly because CPS had come to my house a couple of times, and because the school was concerned of what, what they had saw. I had like bruises or whatever, and so I learned very quickly that like, whatever happens at home needs to stay at home. We ended up moving to California like 1999, and it was okay, like, because my sister had stressed my parents out so much with the things that she was doing, I had always promised myself, like, I'm gonna stay the golden child, like, I'm gonna do really well, and I'm just gonna cover up anything that's going on, or mentally, like for me personally, or that's going on at home, I'm just gonna, you know, I'm just gonna ride the wave and, I'm just gonna make my parents proud. My dad ended up going to prison for a few years for embezzlement, and when that happened, I feel like my personal mental health, which was already pretty bad with zero coping skills, it just got worse. In eighth grade, I think I tried committing suicide maybe two or three times. I started drinking, and drinking led to using weed, and eventually I got onto like harder substances like cocaine and methamphetamine. But I felt like I was very functioning, like I was varsity basketball player. I had good grades. I was still really involved with my family, like all my stuff was very personable, and like, I used to be a cutter, so all of my stuff was covered up with like wraps, or, you know, like they have the sports bands, the sweatbands. So I thought like, everything that I was going through was just normal and manageable, and I could just hide it all. Well, my senior year, I, my drug use had gotten a little out of control, and my dad was back from prison. He had a temper, and I didn't like it, so I ran away a lot. Truancy officers, they came to my house, but I was almost 18, so they just kind of let it go. I ended up not graduating from high school and just ended up working. Fast forward, I, I was always working, so I was felt very like productive and was going like in and out of college. Like I love psychology classes, but can't do math. So I just kind of picked and choose what I was doing. And I ended up having my oldest daughter in 2010. She's amazing. But my best friend had passed away in 2011, just short, like a month shy of her turning two, and I just down spiraled. I, my usage of drugs, which was methamphetamine and, at the time like opiates, it was out of control. I ended up losing custody of my oldest daughter, and to mask that pain, I just used even more. Because I had zero coping skills. I had no idea how to, like, I had no idea how to do anything, so I just wanted to be numb. I ended up going to jail a few different times. Incarceration did nothing, like, it made me sober for a while. And then there was a saying, like in jail, you learn how to like, be a better manipulator or thief, or just it's a place to sleep and stay just for a short period of time. They don't offer any real services in jail except for maybe AA or NA, so there, you don't really learn anything on like how to fix what's going on into yourself, right? I ended up getting out and eventually got clean from opiates, which was good. But I still wasn't fixing any problems. I was in and out of my oldest daughter's life, and the relationship that I was bonded in was very abusive. He and I were very toxic, not only from like our drug use, but like he was very abusive. I think the entire stint of our relationship, I ended up getting like my nose broken, my ankle. He fractured my spine in three spots and punctured my spleen. I became very isolated. Anything that was healthy or promoting me to go into a better place, I was too afraid to do because I would always get beat up. So it just, I eventually got so isolated, my family wanted nothing to do with me, like, I feel like authorities didn't really take me seriously because, one, I was on drugs, but, so it was kind of like, well, you're choosing to live this lifestyle, so therefore you're like choosing to be involved in the situations that come with it. That's how I felt. Still had zero coping. And eventually, like 2018, I decided, I was like, I'm either gonna end up dead, or I need to leave. So, it was really funny. I actually checked myself into like an outpatient rehab, but I told the counselor, I was like, I'm not gonna quit doing drugs. I just need to learn how to cope. Like, I just need to talk to somebody, and I just, then I'll figure it out. So I'd walk to rehab, and then eventually I was getting in trouble for doing that, so I stopped. And it took me over a year to get a restraining order completed and filed and submitted. Once I got my restraining order, I left. I took my dog and my backpack, and I'm not sure if you're familiar with North Highlands area, but Hillsdale Madison, there's a church right there. I literally, I was sleeping on the sidewalk. And the church was really cool. They, like, a couple nights a week, they were having groups, and that's how I would eat, or I would just ask people outside the Denny's or Jack in the Box to, if they would buy me something to eat. When I left my abuser and became homeless, I also found out that I was pregnant. So that was another twist. And November 18th, I believe is the day that I left him, and that's also the day that I got sober. So it was very difficult, being a female and being on the streets, it's very scary. Human trafficking, especially in like Sacramento, is very real. So, that being said, even though I was homeless and I was staying on the street, like literally just sleeping on the sidewalk, no tent or anything, just me, my dog, and my backpack, I was actually utilizing intensive therapy at WellSpace, and that saved my life. Even though the doctor was getting paid to listen to me, he was the only person that was my support system. And then that also, I did the outpatient rehab. I got connected with Weave, and all these people became my support systems. And I didn't have any family that was talking to me. I didn't have any friends. I couldn't trust anybody. My abuser violated the restraining order 13 times and never went to jail. So within that, like he had, he had always promised me like, oh, if I like left him, he was gonna hurt my family, or is he was gonna do that. So I chose to be homeless in the area where he was located, so that he could see that I wasn't with anybody important to me. Yeah, so I eventually was able to get a job. When I got a job, I was very transparent. I was like, look, I'm homeless and I'm doing the best that I know how to do. She, she gave me a chance, and I was working Chipotle, and my dog stayed outside of Chipotle. And eventually I was able to use that money to stay in a hotel, and then I used that money to get a car. And I was eight months pregnant, living in my car, sleeping in a police parking lot, because I felt like maybe that was the only safe place to be. I was still doing intensive therapy. I graduated my outpatient program three times, and they're like, you don't need to do it anymore. And I was like, well, I just want the support system. I still do therapy to this day, which helps keep me grounded. My, when I, when I got my job, before I got, before I had Chloe, my youngest daughter, I was able to get an apartment downtown, doing all these right, these little things that, like, doing all these little steps that finally got me on my feet. My family got, they, I gave their trust back, and not only were they being supportive, my oldest daughter, whom I lost all contact with, because her dad, rightfully so, had put a restraining order on me, sorry, he, he could see all the hard work I was doing, and I was eventually able to do reunification therapy. And after I had Chloe, I went into Bridges Women and Children's Sober Living, and that support system there was unbelievable, and they actually helped facilitate some of the visits and all the classes. And I think it's, it gets overlooked how much coping skills you learn through all these different resources. They linked me with an organization called CASH, and that place was, was absolutely amazing. And I eventually got my own housing voucher from the Emergency Housing Voucher, and now I'm thriving with Chloe full-time. I have my oldest daughter half the time. And it's been so amazing to see how far I've come. And I truly think, you know the old saying, like God doesn't give you more than what you can handle, and everything happens for a reason. I truly believe that not only did I have to go through the mental health aspect of like, being extremely depressed, having so much anxiety, going through the abuse, going through my substance abuse, feeling the isolation to, okay, I'm going to put one foot in front of the other, and I'm gonna do all the things I don't want to do, but are helping, even though I'm angry at the world. And, you know, then you see the, all these little support systems. And I've never been so excited to be my parent, my kid's mom, because they can say, you know what, she went through a lot, but she overcame it, and I can look up to her. My youngest daughter will never have to see me on drugs, and my oldest daughter loves being around me now. And her dad and I, we went from hating each other to, you know, we all went on a family vacation to Disneyland. And that's just part of my story, but that part of my story is important because I came to the county last year, about September, late September, and my coworker, my coworker, also my friend, she's like, why don't you try applying? Like, did you know that you can like make a career out of your past? And I was, had no idea what she was talking about. And I've always wanted to help somebody else, because I truly believe if I changed and I got on my feet, anybody can. And, you know, the ability to go into the field, people that are homeless that are either on the sidewalk or in a field, or have zero hope, like, being able to share resources. Not everybody knows that therapy is free. Not everybody knows that you can go to rehab for free. It takes time to get in, but they don't know all these different resources. And sometimes we're the only point of contact that, that they have. So I love giving people hope. Sometimes it takes a long time to build that trust and rapport. But, you know, I have a couple clients. One client, they just really wanted help, had no idea how to get into rehab. We utilized SubT, and they successfully like did their program, and now we're in their own place. There's a couple people that are just, you know, they feel so lonely and so isolated, and nobody wants to talk to somebody that hasn't showered in a week, and they don't have like perfect clothes on, or they have holes in their shoes, and I can really relate to a lot of these people, and not everybody wants to be there, and nobody, and they just don't know where to turn. And when you're that low, you don't always remember that there are resources, let alone know how to start. So being that person that can be like, hi, I can get your foot in the door, like I believe in you, and it's, it's gonna be hard, but, you know, there's hope, and I believe that you can do it. Sometimes you have to believe in somebody else before they can believe in themselves, and that really makes a huge difference. I truly believe that I haven't worked a day since I joined the county, because I'm doing what I love. It's hard, but it's very rewarding, and I wouldn't trade any of it, so.
Okay, meeting adjourned.
Sorry.
Amy, before, Amy, I just want to say on behalf of the Board of Supervisors that I've never been prouder to see someone wear that shirt. All right, Kelly.
Yeah, Amy, thank you so much for sharing your story and being vulnerable. You're an inspiration. Okay. Okay, the, the good part and the bad part about my job is I get to hear these amazing stories and then I have to have these types of reactions and be embarrassed about them. Okay, alright, so back to it. Um, I mean, it's, I think, isn't that just setting the stage for the important work that we're doing? Everyb- every person we serve, their life matter matters and can achieve those types of outcomes. It's not easy, but it's hard work and and we love doing this type of work. So, a little bit more on, okay, stop. Uh, uh, let, let's go back one slide, I just want you to see, look at this beautiful picture of Amy and her kids. Thank you, Amy. Alright, um, jumping in, uh, behavioral health, now we're gonna talk about our fundamentals, what behavioral health is and what our uh, basic responsibilities are. Um, ultimately, uh, our main responsibility that's in statute in our contracts with the state. Is that we are a Medi-Cal Health Plan, um, we're a mental health plan and a substance use health plan. Um, but we're a health plan just like any other health plan and so we have responsibilities to um, uh. Uh, maintain the regulatory um, uh, structures that are all uh, required as a part of that. And um, uh, specifically, our responsibilities are for the s- seriously mentally ill. And for those with a substance use disorder. Um, with Medi-Cal, so if they don't have Medi-Cal, then their. Care is supposed to be somebody else's responsibility, right, it's supposed to be part of their private health insurance. If they don't have any health insurance, then we definitely help uh, assist them with getting onto Medi-Cal, but this is. Basically, our main, uh, our, our main mandate, if you could flip to the next slide, please. Um, uh. So to further complicate things, um. The county's responsibility on, in the mental health realm to those with a serious mental illness, those with the very most severe. Uh, challenges and those are the types of challenges where it's actually disrupting in a major way their ability to function within the community. Um, uh. And then the uh, mild to moderate part of mental health care is responsibility of our managed care plans. These are our fundamentals and and it is a complicated sort of. Complex way of organizing health services and it still remains confusing. Uh, understandably, too much of our, our public, so. Um, we do continue to wanna make sure that we just hit on these fundamentals so that you understand if, if there are, is confusion within the community. This is out of our control, this is the way the state has chosen to structure this benefit and this is. Uh, you know, we're, we're working within that structure. Uh, on the substance use side of the house, uh, we have implemented a new, newish uh, drug Medi-Cal organized delivery system that went into effect in two thousand nineteen. On the, on the substance use side, we have responsibility for the full continuum. So we don't, there's not a mild to moderate confusion there with the managed care plans, we're responsible for the full continuum on substance use. Next slide, please. So, just to give you some basic uh, information about our division, uh, we have a, a budget of six hundred and sixty-eight million dollars. We have roughly six hundred and sis- sixty uh, FTEs that are employed by the county. Um, but we are ninety percent contracted out. So, a, a significant amount of the work that actually happens is happening among our. Uh, amazing community-based organizations within Sacramento County. We have a hundred and sixty-one provider agencies with two hundred and thirty-eight programs, that's a, that's quite a bit. Even for as large a county as we have. We have a workforce of well over thirty-five hundred people across the entire system. Um, we serve uh, roughly forty thousand consumers uh, each year in our inpatient outpatient system. Uh, that's including both mental health and substance use disorders. And then in our prevention, early intervention programs, we're hovering right around half a million folks that, that are able to benefit from those services. We also have an extremely com- um, uh. Uh, well-established and uh, built-out uh, media presence in terms of our various campaigns. That include both our mental health pro- uh, projects such as our um, uh, Stop Stigma. Uh, initiatives as well as our substance use disorder initiatives around um, uh, prevention around fentanyl, around opioid use. Around our meth coalition, um, uh, and this media campaign has in a, any given year roughly thirty-eight point five million impressions. And so that's how many times people are exposed to the messages that we have. So, lot, a lot, uh, a lot of really great work being uh, happening out there. Um, one of the things that we think about from a budget perspective is that we at every opportunity are. Trying to maximize our Medi-Cal federal revenue, um, it's almost. An ethical responsibility to bring as much federal revenue into the county as possible. In order to make sure that our resources are maximized to the, the greatest potential. Um, so we, we do a lot to try to pull down that Medi-Cal revenue whenever we possibly can. Uh, current uh, payment reform occurred uh, July first, two thousand twenty-three. Um, which completely changed how we're being reimbursed and we are still experiencing the growing pains of going through that payment reform as. As many of you received uh. Extensive communication from our provider network on that prod- on that topic and. We're doing our best to um, make sure that we're as successful as possible in payment reform, we do, we just uh. We, we have been, uh, it's been indicated to us that this is probably a stepping stone, this isn't payment reform, now we're done. This is a stepping stone to, one step towards ultimate uh, payment reform of capitation. So, we are needing to do our best in implementing this phase of payment reform. So that when it gets time for that capitation, we have really strong data that gets us the best. Capitated rates we possibly can for Sacramento County, so we're being very thoughtful and strategic about how we implement payment reform.
Ryan, explain capitation, please.
Capitation is um, a per member, per month reimbursement, so rather than us. Getting reimbursed, I did a case management services, so I get reimbursed for that, I did a psychiatry appointment, I get. Reimbursed for that, capitation is, here's your money, figure out how you're going to, to use it in order to meet the full needs of the, those individuals. And so, right, the, to get too far down into the weeds, but um. Ultimately, they're gonna calculate a capitated rate and I, I do think that there will be some counties that are winners and some counties that are losers. Uh, around um, that capitated rate and so we're being as strategic as possible to put ourselves in a place to get the best capitated rate we can. And in order to get there, we need to be showing as many of the, the services within our Medi-Cal billing as we possibly can. So we're, we're working very hard with our service providers to do that. And next slide, this is a quick visual on the top, um, it shows you where our various funding sources come from. Everything from uh, patient care revenue is basically the Medi-Cal revenue. We have two thousand eleven realignment, nineteen ninety-one realignment, we have uh, what is currently known as Mental Health Services Act and someday will be. Behavioral Health Services Act. Um, then we have uh, uh, an assortment of other um, funds there. Um, overall, we are, we are not. Very much funded by County General Fund, we do have a maintenance of effort that we have to in order to ma- uh, meet the requirements of our contract. But we, that's where we're at, we're not doing anything more than what we're required to do on County General Funds. In the figure below that is um, uh, uh. A visual to show you where those funds go. So they go to our administration, to our children's uh, mental health, adult mental health, to substance use prevention and treatment. To our treatment center and then to all of our other psychiatric beds on the community. That gives you a little bit of a visual how our funding is split up. And from there, I will now turn it over to Sherry to talk to you about our child and family services.
Thank you, Chair, Ryan, before we move on, just so I can kind of help. Piece this together, if you look at the budget by service program category. And you go back on the, on the previous slide of the uh, almost forty thousand consumers served. And you mentioned almost up to five hundred thousand or half a million people, how, how do those numbers plug into the, the program categories? In other words, can I correlate the amount of money being invested in each of these areas with these numbers of the total clients?
Yes, it is a very complicated um, method because um. Some individuals need more services, some individuals need more, less services, so there's a dosing. Type of a, a, a factor, but the, the bottom line is that yes, if, if you see dollar, dollars going to that particular area. That represents how much services are going out into the community for those individuals to that.
It, it, it does, and so I think what I'm hearing you say is it's not a. There's one client in this color and one client in that color and one client in this other color, there may be one client that touches several of.
Yes, absolutely, as Amy's story, um, very well illustrated.
And I might add to the nuance where. You have some categories that absorb a, a huge portion of, of those resources and I'll use um, residential beds. Yeah. Um, costly rates, that's where we've seen tremendous growth year after year. On just one increase in, in demand as we've brought new beds online, but also the increase in cost for those. Versus the cost to provide outpatient treatment is gonna be a lot lower per individual. So it definitely, i- it buries across programs and maybe that would be something in the future that we can start to look at is. How many people in our outpatient program and can we kinda come up with a, what the general cost is? For each of those service categories that might provide a little more meaningful information, cuz it's, it's hard to make those apples-to-apples comparisons.
Sure. Sherry.
Hello again, um, we're going to go over our. Children's Continuum of Care or Child and Family Continuum of Care. Um, up at the top are the categories of the services that we offer from prevention and early intervention all the way up to our inpatient services. Um, and the list below shows you the diagnoses that are most common in our system. Uh, but I do wanna highlight that the first three are really very similar to each other. A, a lot of folks say anxiety is a form of depression. Um, adjustment disorder is when we're folk, uh, we're youth are um, dealing with some significant change and therefore are, are, um, their mental health is affected. Uh, so uh, lots of kids dealing with um, depression in their lives and with. Teenagers, sometimes depression manifests itself as aggressive behavior. See that, that's where you see kids in school that are hitting others or um, punching walls or hitting their heads on walls. Uh, this is our slide, is our outpatient system for children's. Flexible Integrated Treatment, FIT, is our flagship program. That serves the moderate to high intensity level kids for outpatient services, it can flex up. It can flex down and it's integrated, meaning we can do it at school, we can do it in the community, we can do it in home, we can do it at grandma's home. Uh, we will integrate into whatever system is experiencing the uh, the symptomology. Uh, we also are uh, adding outreach and engagement, so it is typically been a treatment program. Uh, but we are rolling into it some outreach and engagement opportunity because we are interested in engaging more. With the community to try to help break down stigma and to engage youth uh, into mental health services. Uh, earlier the better, so they can get the treatment that they need and then um. Perform better in school, perform better at home, have better relationships, prevent youth suicides, so it's an important uh, piece is getting folks in the door. Um, and the best way to do that is building relationships and breaking down stigma. And one of the things Amy talks about is her lived experience, being able to share that with the people that she works with in the streets. Living homeless in encampments, um, gives them hope and gives them a sense of, oh, there is something I can do about this and it's the same thing for kids. Uh, rather than trying to hurt themselves, they can actually get help instead. We have Wraparound, which is another outpatient program, but this one focuses mostly on foster youth. Uh, we have a really good working relationship with our partners in CPS and probation. CPS does invest their own funding in a portion of our wraparound budget to uh. To double the money, so to speak, so they gave us two hundred thousand dollars, we can turn it into four hundred thousand dollars of services and it's dedicated for. Prevention of kids coming into dependency. So typically, they come into the uh, the radar of CPS because there's been some sort of concern in the home. CPS says, well, this is very concerning, we wanna prevent having to bring the child into dependency. So instead, we're going to open them up to our non-dependent wraparound program to prevent that dependency from happening. And wrapping around the family and it has become an incredibly successful uh, partnership and uh, uh. The par- the partnership both with just them knowing it's a resource that they can use, they use the slots, they, they use more than the slots that are dedicated. Uh, but then we also see the success with the families not entering deeper into the system, so that uh, that's a. Um, something I'm really proud of is that partnership and then the effect. Uh, therapeutic behavioral services is um, an entitlement, uh, Ryan talked about entitlements and so just to clarify. FIT um, is an entitlement that is outpatient mental health services and TBS, therapeutic behavioral services. Is another entitlement, uh, this is um, what we call an adjunctive service, it doesn't stand alone. It is usually a youth is open to wraparound or to fit. And there is a crisis that happens, a significant one that places the youth at risk of being placed out of home, going into an inpatient facility. They tried to hurt themselves, uh, there's a sudden um, sudden event that happens in the home that's a particularly um. Concerning uh, stressor and we can bring in TBS, which is a short-term program. That really focuses in on the area that needs to be addressed and it's like. S- steroids, behavioral work on steroids, uh, they come in for three months to six months generally. They really put the family back on track and it is a family participation, so it isn't coming in and curing kids of problems, it's helping the family. Figure out how to solve the problem and moving, moving forward and preventing further crises. And then we have our full-service partnerships, which um, most of them sit on the adult side, but we do have these. Uh, Transition Age Youth, uh, speaks for itself, the Family Full Service Partnership is one I wanna highlight uh, out of this, this is the most. The newest one, uh, the Board of Supervisors agreed to invest in a family full-service partnership and then. Uh, decided to invest more into the Family Full Service Partnership this year. Uh, what's exciting about this one is that we can provide the mental health services to anybody in the family. Um, even if you have grandma who needs it, but she's not a Medi-Cal recipient, but the youth is a Medi-Cal recipient. Grandma can get those services too, we have lots of folks where the, the, the caregivers or the adults in the home don't qualify for our services. But the youth does, but the family is a family unit, so they all affect each other, so getting services for. Mom and grandma is really important, especially with intergenerational families that live under the same roof and sometimes you have grandparents taking care of the kids. So it's really important part of the family is the whole unit, uh, is the family instead of just the identified patient of the child. So I'm really excited about that one, um, it has become hugely popular. I sent an, an email out to uh, my partners over in CPS and said, hey, send the word out about the Family Full Service Partnership and we got fifty referrals in one day. Kids living in cars with their parents, really, really uh, needy families, it was very, very awesome to see. That they were ready to take advantage of the resource and we have Heartland that's doing that and they're being uh, they're. Managing to get this program going very quickly and very well. Um, for our FIT programs, the map on the right-hand side is where our locations are, we have sixteen locations now. Uh, we, we have ten providers, sixteen locations, that gives you an idea, we're spread all around the county. And then on the left are some additional specialty programs that we have. Uh, including one that focuses on uh, early uh, addressing of psychotic disorders. Commercial sexually exploited children, CSEC, it's called, is the acronym. Youth Help Network, which is an outreach and engagement program where we go out and try to um. Uh, meet youth in the community, they're usually transition age youth, which are teenagers to young adults. Uh, to engage them in services that they may not know about. There's a lot of uh, youth that have been kicked out of their homes and have no resources and so the Youth Help Network can help them with that. The source is our twenty-four-seven uh, Crisis Response Program, it's mobile and it's for youth under the age of twenty-six. And then we have services within our YDF Youth Detention Facility. Uh, mental health services there and then we have a new exciting one, which is a one-stop shop, we're partnering with Primary Care on this one. To do mental health, health screenings for transition age youth to come in and it's a model that was, I believe, developed in Australia. That we're bringing here and a lot of these programs were started either as grants or uh, are currently still granted. Uh, we apply for a lot of grants, anything we can do to bring in revenue to expand the service offerings that we can provide the community, we, we go for it. And so, uh, a lot of these, I'm thinking actually all but one have been grant um, grant dollars. Alrights. Um, and then I spoke about our collaboration and our new programming. You are um, I believe aware of our foster youth shelter crisis last year. And we've been partnering really closely with CPS around supporting new initiatives. And the board has been very generous in investing in what we need to develop the tools. And so we're um, in the process of uh, we just went out to bid actually on the first, it's the uh, basically it's a program where we can offer wraparound, TBS and FIT services through an FFA, a foster family agency that has kids in their homes. Uh, they can become the mental health provider. And the advantage to doing that is they get timely services, they know the foster parent, they know the strengths, they have the relationship, they have the trust. They were there when that foster parent made the decision, I want to be a foster parent, I want to help kids. They've trained them, they've brought them along on this journey of being a foster parent. Our FIT providers come in, they're strangers. They don't have all of that history and all that knowledge and all that trust. So now bringing it into the foster family agencies gives us a huge advantage of timeliness right then and there, being able to preserve the placement and leveraging that foster parent uh, relationship. And uh, it's very exciting. We're uh, I believe we have five providers that are in the pipeline right now, working on getting Medi-Cal site certified, uh, entering a world they'd never uh, worked in before. So it's really exciting to diversify the types of programs um, and offerings that we have. Let's see, what else do we want to highlight here? Uh, we have our school-based programming. Uh, some of them are educational programs like uh, bullying campaigns, nurturing parent uh, campaigns. We have our mental health first aid trainings that the school staff offer to the schools, the teachers. Uh, Safe Zone Squad, which was born out of a grant, uh, that's a therapist and a peer on a campus to dedicated to both managing crises, helping kids get linked to services, doing mental health screenings. And then an interesting piece that we wrote into the grant that I think is unique is doing restorative mediation. So there's an event that happens in a classroom, for example, there's a youth 15 years old spits at the teacher and then gets in trouble. Youth Help Network, excuse me, uh, Safe Zone Squad can come in, the youth now has to be integrated back into the classroom. And the, the program can help mediate that relationship. The teacher feels offended, the teacher feels unsafe, the kid might feel um, uh, remorseful. So helping bridge that relationship back so that they can get back to an educational environment and a working relationship again. And so uh, so that one we really en- enjoy. And there is also mental health services being provided through our primary care partners, which I think you guys all know.
Can I, I just want to add one thing to, to Sherry's comment, just to highlight again some of the, the shifts and our priority to leverage those federal dollars and, and alternative resources. Um, the, the foster care programs that Sherry is describing is something that over the last year and a half, we've been working closely with um, Department of Child, Family and Adults to really um, build a, a new program that is more responsive and, and braiding in behavioral health dollars and what we can leverage through federal dollars with um, some of the funding that DCFAST receives and it's it's the outcomes, we're starting to see some momentum here. It's really exciting. Um, but I, I just also wanted to lift that up, that it's been tremendous work from that team to, to get us there and the DCFAST team.
Yeah, a- a- and the investments that the board has approved, uh, one of the, one of the responses was that we expanded our therapeutic behavioral services by 25%. Um, that the board approved last year as a, as part of supporting the shelter and preventing kids from going in um, uh, getting 14-day notices, so they're in a foster home and the foster parent says, I'm done. Uh, we want to prevent that. And so adding additional slots to TBS means that the kids can get those services, the foster parents can get those services. And now with the new FIRST program that I described, then they're going to be able to actually do it with their foster family agency and they're going to be ahead of the curve.
Thank you, Sherry. Just want to acknowledge, um, we, we ha- we packed a lot of material into here and so just uh,
Way too long?
A little bit over. So we're going to keep rolling and ask Stephanie to talk to us about our adult services.
Alright, have to tighten it up, I'm okay with that. That's talking for me. Alright, so I have a remote. Just pushing this button. That's nice. I didn't get a tutorial, blaming somebody else, I guess on that. Um, alright, so our adult continuum uh, is uh, has this visual for you, so you can see on the left side of your screen from prevention and early intervention intervention services um, to the far right to our acute and subacute services. And I'm going to focus primarily right there in the middle on our outpatient specialty mental health services. Over the last fiscal year, we'll just say that um, we served up to approximately 10,000 people. I think our data was through May when this went out, but through June, the entire fiscal year is approximately 10,000 folks that were, uh, received services. And off to the right, you can see the primary diagnosis for the populations around um, psych- psychosis and and depressive disorders. So our core outpatient, so similar to FIT, um, I was excited that um, I was a part of the transformation and getting community input on on transforming our previous outpatient system. They had many different levels of uh, agencies uh, that had different levels of care. So if someone's needs increased, they had to change a provider. If it decreased, they'd had to change a provider. And um, with this core outpatient system, I think we went from seven providers before to now we have 11 uh, throughout the county. Um, and the core outpatient is paired with a community wellness center. Uh, so the community wellness center is open to the community and um, is uh, tailored or supposed to be tailored to meet the needs of that community. So again, we have 11 sites, a total capacity of 7,700, uh, approximately 700 each. Well, it is 700 each, but I say approximate because each agency has two sites. Um, one has three, but it allows some flexibility the way that we set up the contracts, that if there's an area that might um, have more need, that they can uh, kind of shift resources there and serve, say, 800 and, and 600 at their other site. Uh, these services um, are um, moderate, high. Um, as Ryan noted, um, managed care plans low to moderate, so these are serving our adult population moderate to high and can adjust that or community-based flexible. They also provide enhanced services such as housing supports, employment, um, services and benefit acquisition when needed. Off to the right is a success story and to cut time, I'm gonna, gonna skip through that because you got to hear awesome success story here. We'll just move on to the next, but uh, you can read that. That is kind of an, an example of the circumstance that our, our cores um, are able to assist with folks. So, full-service partnerships, often referred to as FSPs with our um, excitement around acronyms. So we have 11 of those, which provide our high-intensity 24/7 wraparound services that we refer to as a do-whatever-it-takes approach. Um, these programs are smaller in capacity uh, to allow more resources and time for staff and the funding to go towards each individual client. Because, um, so these are more expensive programs, but they um, are for folks that are struggling to kind of maintain at our core level of care that might have frequent hospitalizations and just need that wraparound for a period of time to stabilize and help them get to a level of care that, that they can step down to our core and allow um, capacity for, for folks that are, that are needing that high intensity of care. You can see we have quite a few. Uh, the majority serve our general population, but we also do have um, some that serve specialty like uh, our Asian Pacific. Older adult, um, transitional age youth, family and justice involved. Little data for you here. I would like you to disregard the word that says FSP right in front of, under the housing supports. That is not accurate. Um, that, that data right there is for our entire system across children and adults. So, but I do have some data for you that might be helpful to compare. Um, so our FSPs, FSPs do a lot of uh, housing support services for their population. So you can see of this um, Oh, it did get updated, I'm sorry. Well, we did update it in time. My, my last copy. Alright, so we actually sir, uh, Sherry's going to speak to in the next slide. Um, we, across the systems, around 7 million, I'll just say. And uh, our FSPs, as you can see, um, uses a good portion of that. And I think we serve a close to 2,500 across our system and our FSPs are serving about 1,700 of those. So our total capacity for our FSPs is around 2,751. I just like to throw in the one, I think that's fun. We have that in there. That's right, one more slot. Um, our current census is at 2,479, which is around, around 270 capacity right now. Over the last fiscal year, we served uh, about 3,300 uh, folks in our FSPs. Um, and I think our average length of stay is around two years, trying to, to bring that down, but um, taking that about a time right now to stabilize folks, but we want to keep that moving to allow capacity to serve the, the seriously mentally ill. There's also some demographics there for you to see the, the folks that we're serving. I'm going to turn it over to Sherry for this piece.
Supervisor Frost.
Stephanie, I wanted to ask you, back on the slide where you were talking about the primary diagnoses. I noticed psychotic disorder 35.2%. Over the last decade, has that increased quite a bit and do you attribute that to drug? Um, psychosis or is that, are these like an average of what it's been over time in your career? Are these, are these numbers changing over time?
I don't think so. I think they're remaining relatively stable.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. That's, that's been my understanding and what I've seen over time, but it'd be interesting to see if, you know, it's changing slightly, but it's so usually that's because we're serving the seriously mentally ill, but that's usually the highest diagnosis.
So schizophrenia and drug psychosis and?
What I would say is that it's, it's the schizophrenia spectrum, um, bipolar disorder spectrum. And co-occurring is very common. Um, so we do see a lot of individuals that with co-occurring conditions served in our specialty mental health system. But I would say that this, the top three diagnoses that you see here are probably pretty consistent over the decades.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Question as well. Thank you very much. Actually, this is for Stephanie. I don't know who would answer. Out of the um, unduplicated clients served annually, 2965 and an FSP, what percentage are homeless or formerly homeless?
Um, I I'm trying to remember, I would say, I think we have, I can tell you in um, the last I looked, it was around 85% are housed in our FSPs. So you can do the reverse math on that, 20, yeah.
But maybe not at the time they were enrolled.
Right.
Correct, yeah.
And that's what I'm interested in, in as well. I mean, um, what percent maybe started out unsheltered and now are housed and are still enrolled in an FSB? Thank you.
Yeah, that's not, um, that's, that's fairly common for that to be. Um, a service that they provide right up front as part of that wraparound is to find housing.
Good segue into our housing topics. Um, Sherry, I don't know if we're going to be able to read all of these though. Maybe some highlights and they can have the stats to take back with them.
Yeah, I think wha- what I want to highlight are a couple pieces of the data. Um, you can read the rest. We did, we have seen an increase in expenditures on helping resolve homelessness or prevent imminent homelessness. That's what I want you to, to really think about when you see improved. That meant we are spending more money to make more interventions to get people off the streets and prevent people going onto the streets. I really, uh, about 95% of our uh, flex dollars, which were uh, which are in all of our outpatient programs, including children's. Now, um, uh, 95 are on rental assistance and those are, are to either prevent or resolve homelessness. And then uh, the security deposits uh, square, I'm trying to find that one. Uh, I like the security deposit square on the far right upper, uh, because that is the number of, that's that is really tied to turning the key on a door so that somebody can get in. We are helping them get that deposit that they couldn't get on their own. And as you can see, it's slower for, lower for adults because they have some amount of income, but families need larger homes typically. Um, and then they end up staying. We end up with families, they only need on average one to two months of help. They only need a hand up, not a hand out. Uh, so usually the, the solutions that we're providing or the interventions we're providing are temporary, um, and not permanent. Those are the highlights.
Supervisor Frost.
Do, do these housing solutions include that conversation we had a couple of years ago relating to the the vouchers and the section eight and sometimes the, the issues with trying to find landlords that would participate in these programs? Does this uh, money include assistance for like repairs? Um, after a tenant has left that extensive repairs or whatever?
Absolutely. We don't want to burn that landlord out, right? So we want to, if, if the place got destroyed, we'll come in and help uh, get it fixed if it was the result of the client's um, mental health condition that caused it. Um, so that they're willing to rent to us again. We don't, it, but the dollars don't include the voucher investments. It's only anything that we provided on top of that. Like, here's a voucher, landlord rent is up here, the voucher cover's here, we, we will help with the, with the difference.
It's really happening.
Yes, oh yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep.
And now I'd like to introduce Ed Juke to talk about our substance use prevention and treatment programs.
Thanks, Dr. Chris. Okay, um, our SEPTI, another acronym, Substance Use Prevention and Treatment Services. There we go. Uh, so, um, as Dr. Chris had mentioned previously, we are a Medi-Cal program. Uh, it's a specialty type of Medi-Cal, drug Medi-Cal, specific for substance use services and two points I wanted to make about the drug Medi-Cal organized delivery system that we did opt into with supervisor approval back in 2019. Um, is that the system is a redesign from our, our previous, what they called a state plan and it revolves around the American Society of Addiction Medicine or the ACM criteria. And I think the, the point that needs to be made with this changeover with the ACM criteria is that we went from a a standardized treatment plan, almost a one-size-fits-all for our clients to uh, you know, an individualized treatment plan for each client. And it kind of um, reflects to uh, your question, um, Supervisor Hume about does this touch multiple levels? And, and that's the point of the organized delivery system. So when you're in a higher level of care, you will then transition down into lower levels of care to support your recovery, rather than just be in one level of care. Be done, uh, that's just, that's not how recovery works. So we want to have them go through the entire continuum to support their recovery. Um, we have prevention and education awareness uh, services. There's a great one sheet in the packets that go over the several initiatives uh, that our prevention services are doing. We have our outpatient, intensive outpatient treatment withdrawal management. Um, some of you might know it as detoxification services. We have our medication assisted treatment programs, which essentially is medication along with counseling primarily for alcohol and opiate uh, use disorder. And then we have our residential treatment services. Our recovery residences, which are essentially sober living environments or transitional living for those that have stepped down from treatment. Um, we are involved in several collaborative court programs and then the Substance Use Prevention and Treatment Services also oversee the three uh, DUI programs that provide education throughout the county. July through May services, uh, SEPTI served approximately 6,061 uh, individuals. And again, that's through several uh, different levels of care. And then we also have our primary drugs of choice and these have remained fairly consistent with opioids, opioids and opiates being our uh, primary. And then methamphetamine, alcohol, marijuana and then others. So our outpatient, uh, and intensive outpatient services, essentially we have uh, youth services and then we also have adult services for our outpatient. Uh, intensive outpatient services are essentially uh, more hours weekly. Um, and so with that, um, we offer the assessment, the uh, care coordination, which is essentially case management. Um, the counseling itself, either in individual or groups, the group services can be from two clients up to 12. Um, and then we also offer family therapy for those uh, that uh, this is affecting a family. Um, and then education, our recovery services are essentially aftercare or post-treatment. Um, and then crisis intervention. Our outpatient services consist of eight community service providers and there's nine separate sites across the county. And then of these eight providers that are outpatient, they also offer the intensive outpatient services. And then withdrawal management services, uh, like I previously stated, this is um, essentially detoxification. Um, the average stays around three to seven days for a client and then at that point, we look to transition them down into residential treatment. We have three providers uh, with a total of 41 beds uh, right now uh, through three providers, uh, 22 beds, six beds and 13 beds. Um, adolescent youth withdrawal man- Adolescent youth withdrawal management is an area that we have a gap right now, so we currently coordinate with network providers and the emergency departments. Our medication assisted treatment, like I said previously, is primarily for opioid use disorder and alcohol use disorder, although we have started some pilots looking at methamphetamine use disorder with medication assisted treatment. I did want to point out that Sacramento County has one of the most robust MAT provider sets out of the state of California. We have seven providers at ten different sites, and we actually have three sites in bordering counties. So we're meeting the edges of Sacramento County. Those counties are Placer, Yolo, and San Joaquin. And then also up to eighteen years of age is considered adolescent youth services for MAT, and that's four of our MAT providers at five sites offer that particular service. And then, like I said, there's three contracted providers. These are not expenditure agreements, but rather revenue agreements with the DUI providers in Sacramento County. So we work with them to ensure that, you know, the education services are being conducted appropriately, and then we also work with them in some of our court programs such as our DUI treatment court. So for multi offenders, we get them into treatment along with their DUI program. Next slide is our residential treatment. I would say this is SEPTI's primary focus of expansion right now. It's basically a one to ninety day stay per the state of California, so that kind of goes with that individualized treatment. We're trying to stay within the DHCS or the state goal of approximately thirty days. I think the last I checked, we were about thirty three to thirty four days on average for for our clients. Adult services are eighteen years and older. We have seven contracted providers at thirteen different sites within the county. And I am proud to say that we do have an executed contract with a youth residential provider. We're working with the state to finalize their level of care designation, so we hope to in the very near future, start accepting youth boys into a six bed facility. So there's very few in the state of California. I think there's less than a dozen that are certified by the state. And then we have our recovery residence services, which essentially, like I said, they're transitional living sober living environments that offer additional support for those that have exited from treatment. Okay, and then I'm gonna hand this over to Dr. Panjala.
All right. And now I'd like to introduce Dr. Nanthapanyala to talk about our inpatient overview.
Thank you, Dr. Quist. Thank you. I'm now gonna talk about the most intensive inpatient and outpatient programs where our most vulnerable people from the community are taken to for treatment voluntarily or involuntarily. Coming up first are the crisis stabilization units. Crisis stabilization units are twenty three hour outpatient programs and very intensive in their treatment. And they provide the individuals who are in crisis and who are meeting criteria for a danger to self or a danger to others or are gravely disabled. I that means people are unable to care for themselves, care for their basic physical needs like home, clothing, and shelter due to their mental illness. The main purpose of the crisis stabilization unit is to assess, evaluate, stabilize, and move them to their next level of care, or if they have stabilized, to connect them back to their community and discharge them with resources. When they are being moved to another level of care, the crisis stabilization unit staff typically work with hospitals, local hospitals, to find a bed for them for the continued treatment. There are three crisis stabilization units in the county. The first one is, of course, the treatment center. We call it the intake stabilization unit. It is it serves twenty adults and five minors. And it also works in collaboration with the emergency departments to bring individuals who are in the emergency departments, local emergency departments to the unit to assist with services. The other two crisis stabilization units are Dignity CSU with twelve bed capacity, serving only adults. And Sierra Vista ISU, which is intervention services unit, serving nine adults. One important thing to note is despite the fact that there are three CSUs and serving everyone, none of the CSUs are running at full capacity at this time. And the only the CSU that is county operated serves minors. Next slide, please. Thank you. Next coming up are the inpatient hospitals. There are eight psychiatric hospitals in the county, four of which are psychiatric health facilities licensed and governed by the State Department of Healthcare Services. Treatment Center is a fifty bed psychiatric health facility along with the crisis stabilization unit, which is in the same building. The fifty bed psychiatric health facility admits clients only from the intake stabilization unit, the county intake stabilization unit. We also have three other contracted psychiatric health facilities in town. And our county gate keeps the beds bed flow over there. And totally, we have ninety eight beds totally dedicated for our Medi-Cal population and indigent population. Apart from these, there are four private freestanding hospitals, Sata Center for Psychiatry, Sierra Vista Hospital, Heritage Oaks Hospital, and Sacramento Behavioral Healthcare Hospital. And these hospitals have a total of about four twenty six adult beds and thirty four beds for minors. None of the PUFs, the treatment center, or the contracted PUFs see minors. They only serve adults. So the there are only two hospitals that serve minors, Sierra Vista and Sata Center for Psychiatry. Minors ranging age ranging below eighteen. And Sata Center for Psychiatry is the only one that serves the age group between five and twelve. Sierra Vista serves only adolescents thirteen through eighteen. So there is a great need for beds for minors. Let's see. One of the things about the inpatient facilities is that they provide psychiatric treatment, acute psychiatric treatment when the individual is in crisis, stabilizes them, usually takes about a week or two. Sometimes can take longer. But one thing to note is that discharge does not happen until there is a safe discharge plan in place. If it takes a longer time, so be it. Next slide, please. Thank you. So as I mentioned, there is a great need for minors beds and and this is both for crisis stabilization and for inpatient beds. So we received a grant from Behavioral Health Continuum Infrastructure Program, B-Chip Round Four. And this is helping us with bringing a new CSU and PUF for minors exclusively for minors. And both the CSU and the PUF will be serving minors ages five through eighteen. CSU is, I mean, will have about twenty seven bed chair capacity and the PUF will have a sixteen bed capacity. And we'll be partnering with neighboring counties for those beds.
Thank you, Anakta. And now I'm going to apologize profusely to our next speaker.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, sorry.
Yes.
Good question on the previous presentation.
So and and I know we're going to be talking later about Prop One and SB forty three. That'll be some of the upcoming issues. I saw that on the agenda. But in terms of the the beds that we have available, acute and subacute beds. I know we had that RAND study evaluation. I looked at a GAPS analysis. Where where are we in terms of meeting some of those recommendations? I think particularly on the subacute. I think that's a RAND. That's what they identified as one of the big gaps is.
We do have some more data in another slide at some point, but yes, we're that is our guiding north star is that RAND report that has basically identified that we did not have a shortage of acute beds. We did have a shortage of subacute beds. We're working very diligently to contract with existing facilities to expand our capacity as well as pursuing opportunities to be able to actually both build and create additional capacity here in Sacramento County.
But but even since the RAND study was done, I mean, I mean, it shows here we have some upcoming more additional CSU capacity and PUF capacity. Over the past few years, we've added a great deal of of capacity with all of these providers, right?
We yes, absolutely. And we do have a slide on that.
And okay, great. And and the other one other thing with with the CSU is just so I'm I'm clear, doctor, and thank you for the the presentation. So both our county mental health center and I think Sierra Vista, those are law enforcement can bring fifty one fifties to either of those locations or an ED, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and I haven't heard a lot from them lately. I know there was maybe some confusion about some some locations where they would be eligible to take someone if they take them into protective custody under a fifty one fifty, but any any recent developments on that? I'm looking at either Siobhan or.
You know, I can let the team talk about the outreach they've done with law enforcement, but you're right. It was an underutilized resource. And during COVID, we didn't have as much capacity. And so it is still the case where law enforcement needs to call just to make sure that the individual is appropriate for that type of bed. But once they do call, we can often divert from the emergency room to, you know, because we're trying to decompress our emergency rooms. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, please.
Thank you, Chair. And I realize we're short on time here, but I want to start with the last slide there. The CSU and the and the PUF, we had a plan. We had the land. We had money in hand and we couldn't make it happen. So if I can get a update, status update, we can be offline. Doesn't have to take today, but I just want to know where we are with that process.
And I correct me if I'm wrong, Ryan. I think we might actually talk about that on a few slides in because we are we definitely want to talk about that was B-Chip Round Three.
Yeah.
And we we are working with the state and community partner to salvage that project. The round four that's discussed here, no impacts at this point. We're still on on track. And expect to be to be able to deliver as anticipated.
Good. Just want to make sure that twenty five million is still in play.
Yes.
And then my other question, and whoever can answer this fairly succinctly, so we don't keep our next speaker waiting longer, but a lot of focus on foster youth, but I think that that transition aged youth, non-foster youth. Obviously, in the pandemic, they were cut off from a lot of support networks, a lot of, you know, access to to different programs and things. Have we seen a surge? And how are we serving that population that, you know, obviously is a very vulnerable time and coming through something that's extraordinary that we'd never seen before?
Interestingly, there's been a reduction in the amount of youth that have been served or referred into our system or or are seeking services in our system. It's been an interesting shift. We expected when COVID lifted, we would see that the surge that you are talking about, and we haven't seen it yet. But so some of the efforts around adding the outreach and engagement is to go out and actually try to engage in the community because we think that people do the youth still have the needs. Youth are still attempting to commit suicide. And so we're working on a grant around suicide prevention as well.
We've and we've changed how we're doing things as well. You don't have to come through the county to get to those services. You're able to actually go directly to our fit providers and be able to. We're trying everything we can to loosen up barriers to care, and we're still not seeing quite as many referrals as we're expecting. So get the word out. If there's a youth on Medi-Cal that needs our services, please feel free to refer them to us, and we'd love to support them.
I think it's also recognizing that we have to look beyond traditional methods of providing care. So Al Cove is is looking at a non-traditional model. So I think we're just having to think outside the box and looking at, you know, doing the engagement, talking with folks, and looking at other alternative ways of providing care, telehealth, and different modalities that our transitional age youth would be more interested in. So I think those are where we're focusing our attention on to to try to engage this population that are not seemingly interested in our traditional approaches.
Okay, thank you. Okay, before we go to our next speaker, we do have one speaker slip on item number one. And each speaker will have two minutes to speak and address the board. And this speaker is Nancy Brinelson. Come to the podium.
Good morning. I'm Nancy Brinelson. I represent Family Advocates for Individuals with Serious Mental Illness. A number of people in this room know us and and we know them as our family members have been involved at all levels of care you've been discussing. We appreciate the complexity of the system that you have and the hard work that it takes to operate it. It doesn't always work as well as it should. And we probably represent the individuals who would be in a full service partnership for most of their lives if they weren't incarcerated or already deceased. We're looking forward to the sessions later in this day on justice involved initiatives, new initiatives such as SB forty three and redefinition of gravely disabled. And I know you had so much to pack into this agenda. But I'm a little bit sorry to not see more on assisted outpatient treatment, given the amount of time that the Board of Supervisors spent thinking about it. And as always, we want to encourage consideration of family voice in representing these individuals who are the most unable to represent themselves. And looking forward to this day and having a further opportunity to talk with you. Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to our next item.
Item two is UC Davis Mind Institute overview.
Once again, we'd like to thank our host for having us here at the Mind Institute and like to introduce Dr. Marjorie Solomon to tell us a little bit about what they do here.
Dr. Sullivan, I also want to thank you for hosting today, but but also to apologize for going over as we have and and appreciate your patience.
To say thank you very much for the opportunity because we thank you all. We work in a different system of care. We work in the developmental disability system of care primarily, although many of our individuals that we serve do have mental conditions as well. So they're making some progress here. And we very much appreciate Supervisor Kennedy's invitation to speak and also Supervisor Dr. Quist. Can I just play it from here?
Mr. Chairperson, may we take just a three-minute recess?
We'll recess for three minutes. We will come back to order. I know. I missed the gavel. Thank you, Dr. Solomon. Appreciate it.
Let me call the rollback into order, please. Supervisors Desmond Frost, Hume, Kennedy, and you have a quorum.
The floor is yours. Your floor is yours.
Thank you so much again and welcome. Next slide. What I wanted to do today is that many people wonder about the history of the mind and how this building got built. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about that. And then quickly, we'll tell you about our pillar number one, our research programs. Number two, our clinical program and pillars, what I'm calling three and four, which are education, training and community outreach. Next slide. So the mind, the mind known as medical investigation of neurodevelopmental disorders, although we don't really like to use the word disorders anymore, was the dream or the project hope of six families, the Benito's, the Gardner's, the Hayes, the Rollins, the Sokopolises and the Vismaras in the late nineteen nineties. They initiated fundraising and they partnered with UC Davis School of Medicine. And two years later, we received a state appropriation to build the beautiful building that you're sitting in now. And we also were funded with an allocation that comes in on an annual basis. And throughout, we've always operated under the slogan that we were built by families for families. And it really is true. You can see all the, some of the founding families with their children in the groundbreaking ceremony. And that really was behind the architecture and the design of the building. Next slide. So when we got our state appropriation, it was for several reasons. Number one was to support both clinical and basic research on autism and other neurodevelopmental conditions, to assess, treat and educate patients, to do clinical translational science related to research findings and patient care, to create databases that would help support research both here and internationally, to support education programs and to collaborate with the government on policy. Next slide, please. And here in 2024, our mission and vision, while the initial founding families really thought about a cure for autism, we think differently now. We really think that the goal is that we're an interdisciplinary collaborative research, clinical and education center committed to deepening our scientific understanding of challenges associated with autism and other neurodevelopmental conditions. And that the vision of the mind is to develop more personalized, equitable and scientifically validated systems of support and interventions that help neurodivergent individuals to live their best lives. So we don't think about cure anymore. Scientifically, we learned how challenging anything like that would ever be because the condition is so heterogeneous. And we also really just want to help people live their best lives. Next slide. So this kind of busy slide is a result of some work we did with our internal scientists. You can see our, the black boxes represent the kind of scientists we have. On the left side, there are more of the basic science and biological research into model systems. That's things like animal models, testing drugs in monkeys and mice and in other species. Neuroimaging is a little bit of a bridge on the bottom there. And then we work in clinical behavioral and services research and then community implementation and scale up. So we have dedicated researchers like myself who work in all those areas trying to study neurodevelopmental conditions. The blue box around is environment. And we also have scientists that study the role of the environment in all the conditions. So next slide, please. And one of the things that I feel very, very proud of, since it was our first objective, is that we are really a research powerhouse and a gem in the crown, jewel in the crown of the hospital. We have fifty-six current faculty, thirty-four individuals with NIH grants. They're funded as principal investigators. We involve many school of medicine departments. And if you count all the money we brought in, it's two hundred and sixty-eight point seven million in NIH grant funding. And, you know, at one point, we had the most funding for autism research in the country, just here in little old Sacramento. And the chief science officer of one of our major advocacy organizations, Autism Speak, said that the Mind Institute has been central to most of the significant developments within autism research within the last decade. And so if you take a look at that article, it's a really nice article about the families and how they started the institute. Importantly also, we're one of the few institutions that has four federally funded neurodevelopmentally oriented infrastructure grants. These are training programs or other resources that we can put together to help potentiate our programs. And that's really exceptional through the country. There are not many institutions that have that. Next slide, please. So pillar number two, I'm saying here is clinical care. And as I mentioned upfront, many of our consumers really come in to us through slightly different systems than the mental health system. It's more the DDS system and, but also clinically from the hospital with insurance and so forth. Eight thousand patient visits, I think it's more like nine thousand now, provided by thirty professionals from across the hospital. Our clinic is run by Dr. Scott Akins, a developmental and behavioral pediatrician. And we offer both developmental behavioral pediatrics and genomic medicine, psychology and psychiatry here. And we also, in this pillar, have strong training programs. Next slide, please. It has really been a goal of our hospital to improve access. We know that the Mind Institute has been thought of as maybe not having the best access, but I think that's really turning around. We have many highlighted specialty clinics for early diagnosis, following up children that are at risk for a diagnosis of a neurodevelopmental condition. Something exciting this year is a transition to adulthood clinic that's trying to help some of the adults transition into work environments and also to change over healthcare providers. So that's been very popular service. We also have clinics that are offered primarily in Spanish, like our Crese clinic, a fetal alcohol syndrome clinic and a feeding clinic. Next slide, please. And clinical efforts also extend out into the greater Sacramento community. We have a lot of collaborations with FQHCs and tribal health centers. So we have a telehealth assessment collaborative with Northern Valley Indian Health. We participate in Circle Clinic, which is an integrated medical home for foster youth. Through our developmental behavioral pediatrics, we support many of the county clinics. And in a very exciting development is that we also have a van that's mobile. And from what I understand, they're launching it and it can go out into the clinic to offer trauma-informed assessment and ongoing care. Next slide. This is a little bit busy slide, but it represents an exciting development also in the hospital funded by the Children's Miracle Network. We, one of the diagrams, you can see there's sort of like two paths. The left fork is kind of the bad path because we know that a lot of our individuals with developmental disabilities have had very bad experiences with the healthcare system. They're afraid of blood draws and the lights and the noise and the confusion that goes on in most medical settings. So through this grant, we've really been able to offer wonderful training so that hopefully in some of the diagrams they do, it's a yellow brick road on the right side of the diagram, just to help people to feel comfortable enough that they get their ongoing care. We also here at the mind, we've established vaccination clinics, blood draws and vaccinations can be a big issue, but we have very well-trained phlebotomists who have been able to help with both of those efforts. And that's really been a partnership with pediatrics. Okay, next slide. And we have a wonderful genomic medicine unit. They have specialty clinics for autism, you know, that has a genetic component and other genomic disorders. And they also try to offer advocacy, education, translational research and community service. And they function in our, under the umbrella of our clinic. Next slide. And mind itself, through that state appropriation funds more autism-related specialty care. We do various assessments that are more high-level assessments for neurodevelopmental challenges. We have a lot of CBT providers now, cognitive behavior, health providers. We try to work on improving caregiver-child relationships. We have a social skills group that has been ongoing since I came. I set that up as my postdoctoral program, but we've offered services to children and their families now for many years. We also have a program called Access where we're trying to offer services on stress and coping for individuals transitioning to adulthood. And these are, you know, pretty much all for people with neurodevelopmental challenges and autism. Next slide. We also do a lot of education, training and community outreach. You might have seen, we have a peace pole sitting out in the lobby when you walked in. Check it out. When you leave, this was a community effort where many consumers and professionals from here, clinicians, researchers got together to talk about neurodiversity and to make a symbol of neurodiversity. And we also have these, these training programs I told you about. We host one of the few NIH-funded research training programs for postdoctoral fellows. We have a program called LEND, which is funded by HRSA, which trains more clinically-oriented providers. We have a bi-monthly Mind Research Seminar series, and we also have something, an international training program. And so anyone who comes here to do their training or community members are often able to avail themselves of many of these services. You know, and if you want to be part of that, you can let me know and we'll try to get you on the right list. Thanks. We also have a monthly distinguished lecture series, also very possible for our community members to attend that where we bring in famous speakers on neurodevelopmental conditions to talk about their works. We also have been bringing in advocates for the last several years to talk about their perspectives as advocates. We have community lectures. We have a statewide program that we work with school teachers and leaders to try to help them to manage children with neurodevelopmental conditions. We have Spanish language sibling workshops and online parent training modules, as well as a Sankofa group for parents of African-American families of children with autism. Next slide. We always have a resource center, which is again, right by that peace pole when you walked in. It's not open all the time, but if you go in there, you can get a lot of resources. It's usually the mornings it's open. A lot of resources on dealing with neurodevelopmental conditions in the community. And they also sponsor their own set of programs. They are funded by one of those infrastructure grants I was telling you about. They have a Spanish language conference, a summer institute on neurodevelopmental disorders, which has been running now for twenty-odd years, and that is open to the community as well. Vamos Platicar, which is a Spanish-speaking chat group. And again, the professional training network for schoolteachers captain. Next slide. We also offer support groups. We have a family navigator program, and this is actually very interested. It's families to families working with newly diagnosed children. And we also are very popular on the mind website. Next slide, please. So I just wanted to thank you for your attention and all you do to promote our region. You can check out our website. You can contact me by going online and just looking for Marjorie Solomon. Also, you can contact our new director, I'm the interim. And as of September one, Dr. Aubin Stamer will be taking the reins. And I think we've heard a bunch of interesting things today, and so we're always open to collaborating. So please reach out to us as well. I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you very much, Dr. Solomon. I will say that, you know, I've been familiar with the Mind Institute for many years and the good work that you do largely through Dr. Vismarra.
Yeah.
There's, but one of the things that I appreciate is that that you're not just focusing on kids and you're also looking at the needs of the transitional. And when, because I've found in personal experience, when students with these disorders graduate out of high school, they often, the services and the support drops off dramatically.
Yeah.
And that's when they become our ward. And so that collaboration is incredibly important.
Yeah. I mean, and actually, Dr. Stamer, myself and Dr. Akins are very actively interested. It looks like I will be funded by the NIH to work on an employment program that could really use mental health services to go along with it. It just, as I talk about the siloing of the systems, it's actually a bit of a challenge, but I would really love an opportunity to speak with you all more about that. But we know, I mean, the services cliff is real and we see many of the people that we diagnosed as children or had in our research studies as children. And in my opinion, and I think theirs as well, work is mental health, you know? So we need to get people out there in the community working, you know, all of our people. So.
Thank you.
So thanks.
Other questions, comments?
Yes, very briefly, thank you, Dr. Solomon. Very much appreciate the presentation. And, you know, I am very confident the county will look for any opportunity we can to collaborate with the Mind Institute and because of the wonderful work that you're doing for our community. So thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great.
All right. Dr. Quist, who's up next?
All right. Are we ready for item three?
Yes.
Okay, I'll read that into the record. This is Behavioral Health Special Initiatives.
Thank you. And so in our special initiatives, we're going to start off and talk about our Thrive programming that's relatively new to our network. And Stephanie Kelly will be taking that one.
Okay, so Thrive, I'm going to let you read what that stands for at the top up there. Lots of words in there, but exciting three new programs scheduled to go live November first. We have our two agencies that have been awarded, WellSpace Health and BACS are feeling confident about that go live, so we are as well. These programs are tailored to serve the justice-involved population that have a serious mental illness, eighteen and over. So as you know, a lot of these folks have ongoing justice systems in their lives. So in addition to kind of the feelings of overwhelm and trying to work towards recovery of a mental illness, also having systems in your life ongoing such as court treatment and probation, et cetera. So these programs would be expected to work closely with those partners to help folks move through successfully through those programs. So here's an example of kind of what FSP Services can support with for someone who is suffering from serious mental illness. And in this case, serious symptoms of schizophrenia, suicidal ideation, suicide attempts, and overall just hopelessness in addition to that justice involvement. So this individual had been incarcerated and on probation, had a history of fire setting, which makes it pretty difficult, as you can imagine, for our providers to find housing. But through that wraparound, kind of do whatever it takes approach, they were able to, this individual is able to successfully move through court, what we call mental health court, getting great reports and able to establish housing, maintain sobriety, which is kind of a huge deal, and just start thinking future-oriented, which for someone at this level of illness coming in is a big deal. So thinking about wanting to volunteer at the Crocker Art Museum.
Before we move on to the next one, the part I'd just like to underscore around our Thrive programming is that we started this out as a single program, which was an innovation-funded program that was involved for the justice-involved really as a starting point. And really the goal has been, since I got here, is to have a continuum of care so that we're able to support people at whatever level of need they have, both at the high intensity, like our full-service partnership program, as well as a medium intensity, like we would a course site and being designed specifically to meet the needs of those who are justice-involved. It's a different flavor of needs that they have and creating the right array of services in order to support those individuals. This is obviously definitely tied into our MACE consent decree and our work with our. tied into our MACE consent decree and our work with our mental health diversion and our collaborations with public defenders and the courts, really wanting to step up and be even more of a partner for this particular population.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, I'm sorry, that's a quick question. And so Ryan, I see a lot of references to the post-release and also referrals through mental health court. But what about any pre-trial diversionary? Is, are these Thrive programs available for, for folks in a pre-trial diversionary process? Like some of the things that we get involved with, with our, or support with our public defender's office?
We're definitely intended to be designed in order to meet the needs of those folks in terms of, do we get many referrals?
I think if you're referring to kind of upstream, when we're thinking about mental health diversion, absolutely. And so the idea is, so along the lines where Ryan was going, in terms of thinking about our justice-involved programming along a continuum, we also have a court assessment team. So we're getting referrals from our public defenders, our district attorney's office, family members can refer, and our clinicians can go in the jail, conduct an assessment, assessing folks for, for diversion, whether it's for felony mental health diversion or misdemeanor diversion, get folks linked to services. And as a result, can either have their charges dropped or reduced and get them into the community, into care. And incarceration, you know, really is not the right path. So it's really creating a new path for folks.
That's all, that's exactly right. I just want to make sure that interventions are happening very early on, too, not at the end.
Yeah. So next, we'll talk about another CalAim initiative that these Thrive programs, as Dr. Chris was mentioning, will help support as well, is the Justice Involved 90-Day Pre-Release. So these services, the Behavioral Health Links, is scheduled to go live October 1st, and that is the ability for behavioral health to accept referrals much earlier. Currently, prior to this benefit, folks would not often get referred until the day they're released because their insurance wouldn't go into effect until they walked out the door. So this benefit allows their insurance to go in place 90 days pre, which is supposed to support that, that ability to, to do more collaboration and coordination in pre-release services. The actual, what we call pre-release services, is, has until September 2026, but we're partnering closely with our jail and youth detention facility partners, probation and sheriff, as well as the, the health services in, in those facilities. But the bulk of the work of this benefit is kind of on the health services in, in the jail. There's a lot of requirements from the moment they walk in the door to just throughout their services. And, and as you know, in the jail, that can sometimes happen quickly. So expectations are for those services to be starting right away, identify those eligible, let us know about them, and start doing, doing that pre-release, even for that 75% of the population that doesn't have a release date, but that we can then follow up with them. Because I think now we often don't even get those referrals because they might get released before, you know, the jail mental health is aware of them. So.
And I'll add, certainly, our intent in adult correctional health is, we've, we've submitted our readiness assessment last month. Our intent is to be moving forward in early 2025, as, as quickly as we can recognize. And we have some EHR challenges that we have to work out for billing, but this is a huge, huge benefit for us to be able to implement to the population, the jails.
And it speaks to something Dr. Quist mentioned earlier, which is really to be able to really expand our ability to draw down federal revenue. So this is a huge initiative to, to bring in more federal revenue in our system.
Yeah. So those three new Thrive programs will be the programs that will help support through the weekend. Make sure we're identifying those, tracking and partnering well with our health partners in the facilities.
Not to mention, this should be flagged as a antirrecidivism measure as well.
Mm-hmm. Yes, that's the goal. Oh, you can't get rid of me. All right. So our Community Wellness Response Team, so I'd actually like to just take a minute to recognize Supervisor Kennedy and the board as a whole for the support with this program that allows us to provide a behavioral health response to a behavioral health crisis, which has been wanted by the community for a long time. And so we've been excited to be able to support rolling that out. It is a program that can have a clinician and a peer go together out, or two peer specialists with lived experience go out with access to a clinician via telehealth 24/7. This program has been around, has kind of started, I think it was a year in March, March 1st, getting off the ground. But March 1st is when we actually went live 24/7. So that was exciting, and that was along with the mobile crisis benefit, which I think we'll talk more about later. But that allows, requires us to provide these services for Medi-Cal beneficiaries. So we were ahead of that curve on that. Very cool. So you'll see some of those.
Stephanie, if I could, you know, I flagged this yesterday. Why the significant difference between quarter one and quarter two?
Good question. And those are pretty low. So that was kind of the start out. And so the bulk of our referrals or calls come through 988. As part of the mobile crisis benefit, we were required to have a local line, so we now have the Hope Line. And we're not quite staffed to, to manage as a call center yet, but we do get some calls. And, but we are kind of encouraging the community right now to go through 988, who is staffed to manage a high call volume. So just kind of building out our teams, getting to 24/7 so that 988 can offer that to folks who might benefit. So it kind of started out slowly. And I'll give you some stats on quarter four, which I, we didn't have at that time.
And I think an important distinction here, too, is, so the way that the system's designed, which is, which is really, I think, beneficial, is 988 is, is the primary entry point, at least where we, where we see that. So the volume is a lot higher for calls into 988. If 988 can't then de-escalate via telephone, that's where our Community Wellness Response Team kicks in and then is deployed into the field.
That's what I was, that's exactly what I was gonna add, is that, that we are finding that a high percentage of the calls are being managed via the, telephonically. And we are looking at, at, and we, we meet regularly with WellSpace at looking at the, the call volume being referred to us, and then with the Hope Line being kind of directly calls into our dispatchers, that we are seeing an increased volume of calls coming into our dispatch. So we're hoping to see those numbers increase.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So these, once the team goes out there, they're gonna identify risks and needs. They're gonna create a safety plan, and they will then link folks to ongoing services, whether in that moment, or they're, they also do a 72-hour follow-up call or check-in to make sure whatever plan was put in place is still working. So some stats, fourth quarter, which will show you quite a bit of increase. To Kelly's point, 988 received in, in the quarter four, so April through June, received 4,227 calls. They transferred 256 of those calls to us. And our team actually was able to resolve, and I should say, they transferred 215. We got 41 through our Hope Line. But of those, we were able to even resolve those over the phone, 100 of those. So we responded to 150 of those calls. And of those 150, over 70% were ameliorated in the community. We were able to keep them in their home or wherever they were at, where we met them, and get a plan in place for those folks. And then a little over 11%, which these percentages are staying the same regardless of how many are coming in, we have been able to take to the mental health urgent care or to the mental health treatment center directly. I don't, I can't recall even one, but there might be one or two, since we've started that we've had to take that emergency department, which is kind of our goal, right?
Supervisor Frost?
I would just wanted to ask, to clarify, so the calls are going through 911, and it's the 911 operators that are triaging calls to Hope Line?
No, it's our, it's our partners, WellSpace Health 988, so folks can call 988, and...
So they have to know to call 988, but there's no calls coming from the 911?
Not yet. But on that note, we have a monthly partnership meeting with all of our first responders, law enforcement across the county, and even fire and EMS dispatchers and leadership, trying to develop a bilateral referral process. So it's in the works. We have our MOU drafted, but each agency has their own kind of policies. So we'll have to kind of dig in per, per agency on what they're gonna feel comfortable transferring our way. How do we partner on that? But kind of in the thick of it right now.
That's, that is absolutely a necessary goal, and we've had some really good work with our law enforcement partners to try and identify how, you know, how those calls could be dispatched. And at the same time, really build up 988 as an alternative to 911 across the community, recognizing that a lot of calls coming into 911 would be far better served as a call to 988.
And they might not have.
Exactly.
That's right.
Can I follow up to that really quick? I know, we're, really quick. I know, and I know one of the big justifications for the board investing is that, in this, is because we would want to see a decrease in the number of calls to 911. So as this, as this evolves and grows and we capture more data, I'd be very interested in, in seeing, hopefully, a corresponding decrease in the number of calls to 911 as a result of this, right? Thank you.
I would like to take the opportunity, I see Dr. Jonathan Portius in the audience, and just really thank WellSpace for their collaboration in this. It's been an amazing partnership, and ongoing work is happening in order for us to really align our teams so that we're really having the best outcomes for our community, and really appreciate their partnership. Thank you.
That's it. I would just reference to the right side of the screen, some of our promotional materials. We're continuing to promote this, to get it out to the community, and looking forward to continuing to expand it. We have quite a ways to go. And, and part of that is building trust in our law enforcement partners to be able to, to handle those calls with our staffing. Yeah.
That takes us to Heart. All right, Sheri.
Hi, everybody, again. I'm here to talk about the Homeless Engagement and Response Team, but just a quick follow-up to Supervisor Frost's question regarding the voucher differential. We supported last fiscal year 270 folks with that supplemental, so they could get into their housing. Yeah. All right, moving on. So Heart is a fairly new program. It's county-operated. So Amy here is one of our peers. We go out into homeless encampments outdoors, and then we also have a small team that also does engagement in the homeless shelters as well. We are surprisingly, there's a workforce crisis in Sacramento, but there happens to be a lot of really passionate people about serving the folks experiencing homelessness. So that program has been actually pretty well-staffed. There's a really tight team there. They go out in pairs typically with a counselor and a peer together. The shelter teams do not have peers with them, so that's something we're hoping to build out in the future. And they engage folks. It's really an outreach and engagement. It's not a treatment program. It's out there building that trust and working with them when they're ready to say yes. Not everybody is ready to say yes to coming indoors, quitting drugs, admitting that they have a mental health condition. There's a lot of stigma around that, and, and there's a lot of lack of hopelessness, as Amy was mentioning. And so Heart's real big job is around building trust and rapport, and then doing those mental health screenings, and then linking them to the services. And then sometimes folks get lost in the system. They, they disengage from their outpatient provider. Heart then goes back out and re-engages them and keeps bringing them back in. But it's a long process for some folks. They've been homeless for decades at times, and it means changing their entire life by saying yes. And it's not an easy yes for some folks. And so I think the work that Heart does is really, really important. We've outlined the phases there. People go in and out of their willingness to engage in changing their lives. And we have now our new tiny home programming and our other bridge housing that will help bring people in. Because sometimes I say, well, do you have housing for me? I might say yes if there's housing, and we say, well, not yet, but we will. Now, we're gonna have our bridge housing that we can put folks into until we can find the permanent housing, which takes around nine months to find, by the way. We have the money for that rental assistance, but we have to get the landlords to say yes. And so that takes time. So those, those bridge housing opportunities are really important for that. That's it.
Okay, any questions? That's hit with one of our most important programs.
Always trying to be quick.
You got Ryan Quist giving you the dirty eye over there.
Uh-oh.
Okay, well, any questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We do have two public speakers on this item. Each public speaker has two minutes to address the board. And the first is Wade Brynelson. Afternoon.
My name is Wade Brynelson. I and my wife are the co-chairs for the Advocates for Individuals with Serious Mental Illness here in Sacramento County. I've spent most of my career as an educator, as Nancy has, and I've been with the California Department of Education, where I've had responsibilities for mental health, foster youth and counseling. So several of my comments are gonna reflect my experience there because I'm convinced that in order for us to serve the mentally ill kids, students, if you will, we need cooperation between education and behavioral health. I read the entire report that was sent out, and I was struck that many of the so-called outcomes were really statements of activities. And I would suggest that we all have an interest in a better, more solid set of outcomes than are listed in that 109-page report. With respect to possible education cooperative efforts, we recommend that the paper also add to the current system of 30 schools throughout the county, when they're well over 300 here, that have special programs that are related to the mentally ill, and they've hired staff that are competent in this area. The information from the California Department of Education's Healthy Kids Survey, including a special survey regarding mental health, is possible to use for these outcome statements, which I mentioned earlier. And we'd encourage Behavioral Health Section to work with, in this case, the Department of Education, so that all of the schools and districts in the entire state be used in identifying mental health needs and measuring improvements, and thus be included in the outcome statement. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Corinne Sacco?
Good almost afternoon. My name is Dr. Corinne McIntosh-Sacco. My pronouns are she/her. I'm a licensed psychologist, and I serve as chairperson of this county's mental health board, as well as a co-chairperson of the Community Wellness Response Team Advisory Committee. And I am making these comments on my own behalf. I want to thank Supervisor Kennedy for his really bold leadership, standing up the Community Wellness Response Team way back when it was called Alternatives to 911. Indeed, it was the county's exploration of this initiative that motivated me to engage in civic action and volunteer public service, even though sometimes it may cause my appointing Supervisor heartburn. Now, what has been described as a gem in our community's continuum of crisis response has successfully demonstrated its proof of concept. Trained, unarmed mental health counselors and peer specialists can successfully respond to mental health crises without anyone being injured. Hot moments are being cooled, triggering situations are being de-escalated, and people are getting connected to the services they need. The true test of whether there's adequate capacity to meet the needs of the community is whether individuals are able to access needed services in a timely manner. But in order to access the needed services, they first need to know that the service is available, hence the t-shirt I'm wearing today. Unfortunately, not enough people know about the community gem that is a CWRT. Last week, in my capacity as a mental health advocate, I spoke at an event hosted by the I.M. SAC Foundation in a room full of about 20 black Sacramento County residents. Not one of them knew about 988 or the CWRT. Now, they said they've repeatedly seen the billboards for the sheriff's campaign against retail theft, but no one had an idea they can call a three-digit number and get connected to a mental health team to respond to their or their loved one's mental health crisis. And unfortunately, I hear this all too often. Because of my service on CWRT Advisory Committee, I can attest that the lack of community awareness is not due to neglect or failure on the part of BHS. Indeed, all of BHS and the CWRT system partners are to be commended for how they've really been flying a plane while also building it at the same time. I believe it comes down to needing additional resources in the form of both direction from this board, as well as financial resources in order for there to be widespread marketing of this campaign. I also believe there's an urgent need to widen the eligibility inclusion criteria for these calls, as well as obligating 911 dispatchers to make referrals to 988. I did submit written comments with more points than I can make in this two minutes with citations. I hope you'll... I hope you'll read them and I hope you'll take my comments into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sacco. Thank you for your continued commitment to our community and rest assured, I keep a healthy supply of Pepsodays. Any other questions?
Mr. Sheri, I just want to ask, did you, I can offer some insight into some, any of the comments. I don't know if you'd like that today or not.
Briefly.
Come on, okay. Briefly, one, I, in terms of CWRT and outreach, we actually have a campaign going with, with Edelman that is going to be rolling out specifically on alternatives to 911. Closely working with WellSpace and our, and our partnership agreed. We need much more marketing and outreach out there to, to highlight its availability. And we also had a really successful set of gaming seminars with UC Davis and our law enforcement partners to really kind of eke out protocols that we think can help drive us on a forward basis for this program. So we don't have any specific resource asks at this time. We feel that as, as the growth is happening, we can continue to add resources within behavioral health with our existing, with our existing funding as those programs ramp up.
Thank you. And, and let me say that I really appreciate that. I've said all along that, you know, 911 has been part of our national zeitgeist since 1964. So we're not going to just flip a switch, but if we don't put resources into that community awareness, we're never going to get to where we need to get. So that's good to hear. Thank you. All right, any other questions? At this time, we are going to do a working lunch. Correct me if I'm wrong, everybody. We're gonna, let's try to, we have, it's on here for an hour. I'd like to do it in less than that. So we're going to give about 15 minutes to, for people to get meals and come back and sit down. And then we will hear from our honored guest. So we are in recess. Okay, we will reconvene the meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yep, Supervisors Desmond. Frost.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you. I want to make one announcement quickly before we get started. And that's that the, it was noted that the, the HEART presentation was somewhat abbreviated and there's a reason for that. Staff is going to be coming before the board in September, I believe, with a full report on our activities in HEART and our outreach activities to encampments. So that, that is underway, so we will be hearing a full report on that shortly. With that, who's introducing?
Chair, Chairperson, may I ask, say a few words? I just want to let you all know that you have a printed PowerPoint. It's not included in your binder, but it is.
Yes.
The dais, okay?
Thank you. Hello again. I am proud to introduce a couple of our youth advocates from our youth advocate board, or excuse me, youth advisory board, which is a subcommittee of the Mental Health Board. And today we have Rada Chauhan and Cloud Peterson. Rada is 17 and Cloud is 18. And they'll speak about the district that they're in and they're going to share with us what their advocacy has been and some thoughts they have about our mental services for youth.
And just a quick clarification, they are their own board. They are not a subcommittee of the Mental Health Board.
Oh, thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Good morning, honorable supervisors, and thank you for providing us the board to update you all on our activity. I am Cloud Peterson from District Four and one of the newest members joining this May. I have had the great opportunity to learn more about the mental health sphere and have access and knowledge more about how our community in Sacramento County specifically has offered to bring more about mental health. I am thankfully here with my co-chairman, Rada.
Good afternoon, honorable supervisors. My name is Rada Chauhan, representing District Three. I actually got onto this board because of a passion I have for advocating for mental health. You may not remember, but when I was an associate board member, I presented you, to you guys a while back. And ever since then, this passion has been growing upon me and now I'm entering my senior year of high school and I'm very grateful for this opportunity. Now, moving on to our timeline highlights. So the BHYIB presented recommendations on mental health resource accessibility and sustainability to you all on May 9th of last year. Now, following our presentation, board members engaged in focus sessions with the California Department of Healthcare Services and devised the development of telehealth programs. The source also then came before our board to explain the services and referral process, referral process. Our greatest concern with the youth mental health hotlines was the many, was that many clinicians and call hosts do not clearly state their role as a mandated reporter. Therefore, we encourage their organization to develop a script that would clarify the callers, the bound, for the boundaries on their conversations. The source also had members advise them on graphic suggestions for their advertisements. Later on, in collaboration with the Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board and the Public Health Advisory Board, the BHYIB, our board, made recommendations for the social media campaign. And that campaign is now making headway through safer Sacramento, which is exciting. Now, one of the objections later on of the BHYIB is to expand the number of youth advocates within Sacramento. Board members attended city council meetings, made public comments regarding a youth sitting on the dais with city council. And when the city voted against the youth liaison role, it became clear to our board just how valuable this opportunity, opportunity is to have a platform that elevates our voice. And for that, I'd like to moment to say we appreciate you and thank you. Now, later in, in April, I advocated for California Assembly Bill 2411, the local youth mental health board bill. The bill's purpose was to require each community mental health service to have a local youth mental health board that would advise the governing body, school district governing bodies and a public health system. This bill passed legislation on April 9th of this year and we're hoping to see it in the Senate soon.
Following Rada's point, our other recent highlights, while our board and membership has lacked quality, quantity, we have greatly addressed this through our quality of work. With a new round of appointments, members underwent a routine onboarding process and reviewed the Sacramento County's mental health continuum. Most members joining this board have a robust lived experience and minimal knowledge on the mental health system. Therefore, much of our time and resources are dedicated to educating ourselves. We are grateful for having, to have a supportive, community-based organization to oversee facilitations and are successful when the county offers guidance in how our advertisement can be best utilized. To ensure we are aligned with the county's values and are informed in current policy, the BHYIB, our board, has collaborated with the mental health board to establish a liaison role. Our liaison, Natania Karat, attends meetings to ensure our board is properly educated on activity, the mental board, health board debriefs. We are also proud to be approved to host our social media page on Instagram with our scope of work requiring us to engage other youths within our community. It is imperative that we access platforms youth frequent on. Our original request took place in 2022 and our page has officially launched June of this year. We are grateful for the county's accommodations and collaborative efforts to make this a possibility, which leads us to our goals as a board. The board has centralized efforts to provide resources, support and connection for youth to access mental health as mental health professional services. A great example of this is our mental health resources and sustainability policy brief.
Another one of our goals is when we're meeting adult allies and providers, we members always try to inquire and advocate for a safe environment that honors culture and community. Now, we do this with listening sessions, adult ally interviews to make sure everything's all right. And what we're going to be talking about later throughout this presentation, survey development.
Following Rada's point, our other third goal is the diversity of our board reflects the beauty of Sacramento. We are a direct representation of creed, education, race, gender, fluidity and familial background. We aim to promote equity, justice and accountability with a concentration application of resources towards youth in the greatest need.
And speaking of diversity transitions, through a culturally responsive education, we try and we can advise providers through a broadened perspective. For instance, we annually meet with the International Rescue Committee to learn about Sacramento's Refugee Committee, which mentioned a lack of familial education. Therefore, our efforts in telehealth pave way to empower families to engage in their children's mental health, trying to take a more holistic approach. And that leads us to our recommendation updates. Now, as I said before, on May 9th, we were here, we presented four recommendations for mental health resource sustainability and accessibility. And we'd like to just update you on some of the progress made since then. One of our recommendations was to support county collaboration with the Office of Education and the recruitment of mental health practitioners on school campuses and the promotion of schools as not only centers of education, but also wellness and restoration. At the time of our presentation, the Sacramento County Office of Education, SCOE, had 33 clinicians on staff. And currently, there are 58 clinicians on staff, 15 graduate clinical interns, of which 10 are peer specialists or youth who earned stipends for working with high school students who have been placed on school campuses. Now, this number also includes six family navigators, which have been assigned to a cluster of schools to, to support families with younger children aged zero to five, accessing preventative care. And we expect by the end of 2025, 125 people to be in this pipeline. Also, SCOE's collective impact approach to turning schools into center of wellness also includes integrating mental health into their daily practices. The progress made on the campuses to address mental health prevention and provide referral to intervention resources addresses our original aspiration of mental health resources being more easily accessible.
And following on with our other recommendation updates, last year, we also encouraged county collaboration with the state and development and advertisement of telehealth programs where students can contact or connect with mental health professionals and clinicians online. As mentioned, our board has privilege to do this through the focus groups with DHS. As a result, Bright Life Kids offers families with children 12 and under free access to parent coaches and free or reduced cost services in your area, such as therapy, healthcare, food, legal assistance and more. Another CalHope application is Soluna, the free mental health app for youths 13 to 12 years, or 13 to 25 years old. Soluna has interactive tools, engaging forums and coaches readily available to discuss non-emergent events. Telehealth appears to have stabilized as a part of care infrastructure. It, and has boosted access to healthcare, behavioral healthcare. But many families and youth in Sacramento are unaware of these programs. We implore the county to promote these applications through community-based organizations and providers that they collaborate with. The BHYIB intends to make the same request of SCOE to ensure that advertisements makes its way through school-wide systems. Continuing on with our personal projects, we have worked on our social media accounts and our board has loved this opportunity to create media posts on behavioral health. It would be optimal if over time our media page can highlight the providers within the county itself. That may youth have access and create educational content on mental health prevention. As our board grows, we will have better, have a better capacity to do so. Some of the posts that we've created as of the moment have often highlighted mental health aspects such as mindfulness, challenges or exercises. We try to have a highlight of figures such as people who have helped our community or have brought support in some form. And last month, as of July, we were able to highlight Minority Mental Health Awareness Month and also pride as well for disabled communities and LGBTQ communities. Lastly, we often try to bring the board updates about meetings or like the bill from 2441 that Rada was able to present. Following that, we have quite a few challenges and solutions as a board itself that we would like to present. We members and the facilitating organization Pro Youth and families have been centralizing efforts on improving the BHYIB, our board. The greatest challenge the board has faced is the application process. It is not as youth-friendly as it should be. The entire process can take up to eight months. To streamline procedures, Pro has recreated the application and assists interested youth in filing. They also have developed an FAQ to be previewed on the BHYIB webpage, our board webpage, and are collaborating with the county departments to ensure application is more visible. In our monthly newsletter, we include vacant posts so offices can remain aware of our status. It would be a great help if your offices also post these board vacancies.
Going off of that, we recommend that the Board of Supervisors coordinate staff, coordinate appointments and interviews alongside pro staff to ensure that young people are well-informed of board activity. Now, this will also allow Pro to follow up with youths that are unselected to become associate board members, which are members that we still need. We have zero positions of them right now. And this is all in our main effort to increase youth voice, which has been a challenge for us as a board. The establishment of our Instagram page has greatly allowed us better direct access to youth on platforms they utilize. And we aim to bring, however, we aim to bring greater visibility to the county's providers by attending monthly meetings and offering direct advisement to their initiatives. With a new, with a group of, with a new group of board members, our board will begin survey development and distribution. So we could get insight from the youth community on current policies we intended to address. Our goal is to host a listening session this year and network at the annual Breaking Barrier Symposium in November. Now, another one of our greatest challenges is board operations. One of the reasons why it's such a challenge is because of the constraints placed on the boards, which were designed for adults. Now, many of these constraints are unable to change. Therefore, we're trying to find alternative solutions. The board will be reviewing and revising its bylaws with the hope of better setting expectations for members. Prior to appointment, we will ensure that youth are aware of the expectations. And as new members are appointed, appointed, we will host a thorough onboarding that reviews all protocols. Lastly, to make the board more youth-friendly, we intend to conduct more virtual training and ensure that the venue for general meetings meets our need, whether that be virtual, in person, or whether we need to change the location. Now, before I end this presentation, I'd just like to thank you all so much for taking the time and letting us present to you. Thank you.
So, thank you, Running Cloud, so much for being here today and also what you're, what you're doing. You've really elevated the board. It's, it's heading in exactly the direction that I envisioned. You know, my feeling was when I floated the idea of there being a board was first of all, I always am a believer in if you're not doing it with me, you're doing it to me. And, you know, believe it or not, there were people in the community that said, you know, that said to me, what do a bunch of kids know about this? And I said, well, you haven't been in the meetings I've been in with students throughout the County of Sacramento who are passionate about mental health, knowledgeable about mental health and who can reach the youth much better than anybody who looks like me. On the social media front, I applaud you on that. There are movements throughout the country to limit access of, of social media to, to youth because of the potential negative impacts on their mental health. I say flip that upside down and realize that our youth are on Instagram, our youth are using social media. So use it as a tool to reach them. So use it as a tool to reach them with the right messaging through videos and, and other things that encourages people of, you know, our youth to actually reach out and, and get health, healthcare and mental health, uh, care that, that is available to them and, and de-stigmatize it. And, and you too, uh, today by being here and, and doing what you're doing, embody that. So, thank you so much for your commitment to our community and to our youth. Board members? Yes.
Well, Roddy and Cloud, that was an excellent presentation. And I want to thank you for your, you and your board, uh, or your commission for your thoughtful leadership and, um, all the input that you gave us today. Um, it's, it's so important. I wanted to ask you, because one of your suggestions was that we could help you by, um, when you have, you know, certain things that you're posting, if we can also post it on our, in our newsletter or on our Facebook. And so I wanted to ask you if you'd reach out, if you, you may have already done this. Um, a lot happens that I'm not aware of, so you may already be in communication with my staff. But let me know, let us know when we can help with that. Because we all have newsletters and we all are active, uh, in communicating with, um, the communities. And so we want to help in any way we can. And, um, thank you again for being here and for being willing to serve. It's, leadership is servitude and I know it's a commitment. And, um, sometimes it's hard finding young people that actually can do it. And so we really appreciate that you're here. Thank you.
And, and if there are board members, myself included, who are falling down on the job when it comes to filling vacancies, do not hesitate to dog us. Okay? Thank you. Thank you so much. All right. With that, Dr. Quist, I believe I got you back on schedule. And so we can't start item five until twelve-thirty, so enjoy the rest of your lunch.
No, we actually can. I didn't time anything on the agenda.
Oh, you didn't? Oh, okay.
I didn't. I'll read that into the record.
Well, still enjoy your lunch, but please read it into the record.
Uh, item five is behavioral health new initiatives.
All right. Good afternoon. My turn to do a little bit of talking as we go through our, uh, I think I need a tutorial. We go through our new initiatives, new and upcoming initiatives. Um, may see us coming to the board on a couple of these topics coming soon. So, uh, this is an opportunity for us to have some conversation where you would like to have that conversation. Um, so that the extent to which we hover over different topics here is completely up to you all. All right. First up, we have a proposition one. Uh, proposition one did pass. And so we are moving forward with implementing, um, the, the new changes that are happening. There are two components to that. There is a bond measure that is for, um, treatment facilities and, um, permit supportive housing. Those, those are not discussed in the materials I gave you, but they are currently, um, being announced as funding opportunities. The treat, the funding, the funding for the treatment facilities has already been announced with timelines. And then the permit supportive housing, we anticipate seeing the applications in, uh, fall, fall of this year. There, there were some initial communications, but I don't think the actual application process has yet been announced. Um, in terms of the actual changes to what we was form, is currently and formerly known as, uh, Mental Health Services Act or MHSA, um, happened in July first, two thousand twenty-six. So we still have just under two years in order to get from here to there. Um, the proposition was, I'd say, very rapidly created and with a lot of, um, unanswered questions in the legislation. And that was acknowledged by the legislators. And consequently, they permitted, uh, provisions that would allow the state Department of Healthcare Services to answer those questions, to flesh out the details, flesh out all of the additional guidance that would be necessary in order to implement BHSA. So the state is currently working on that. They are working collaboratively with counties. Um, as the county, um, uh, as the president of County Behavioral Health Directors Association, I get to be at that table in terms of being able to help, um, try to shape, uh, what requirements are coming down. And some of that has to do with defining what can be paid for in the different buckets. And so we're looking forward to that guidance beginning in early two thousand twenty-five. Um, we'll see, uh, it seems to me that, that, that's optimistic in terms of when they will be able to release a lot of guidance. So we'll be watching that very closely. And as that guidance becomes available, we'll begin our local community, required community planning process required. But that's what we like to do anyway. Um, so we're, we're very excited about finding out from our community how, how we would like to implement the new, uh, the new requirements. Basically, it takes us from five buckets of funding down to three buckets of funding. So this slide demonstrates the old buckets of funding as well as shows the new buckets of funding. And so we're gonna be making transition and, and we will be able to take some of the things we're currently funding and put them into new buckets. But there are going to be situations where we're probably going to have to be doing a gaps analysis around what differences, um, what things we still need to develop and invest in. We don't know what those are yet, because as I mentioned, they are not, they have not yet released what is, um, uh, uh, allowable under the different buckets, the biggest one being the housing bucket. Um, we don't know which things are going to be able to be funded and which things aren't going to be able to be funded in the housing bucket. And that's going to be the one probably that we have the biggest gap that we need to try to address. And so can't really start planning for that until we know what we can pay for in that bucket.
I'm sorry, right? Who, who is it that will ultimately determine that?
State Department of Healthcare.
Healthcare Services, okay.
So these are the three buckets. We have the housing bucket. Um, so thirty percent of our overall BHSA funding, um, is supposed to go towards housing. It has some additional requirements in there. That fifty percent of that has to be prioritized for housing interventions for the chronically homeless with behavioral health challenges. Um, the, that strict, uh, federal definition for chronically homeless is problematic um, because of the folks that we serve are often, uh, dropped out of the chronically homeless definition due to being involved with, um, institutions, uh, and some of the different areas where they receive treatment. So we're advocating for, uh, you know, uh, a special interpretation around what chronically homeless need means. Um, in the original legislation, it talks about rental subsidies, operating subsidies, shared and family housing capital, and, um, uh, and transitional rent. Um, we, we also know though that they, that the language is very specific about not being able to fund treatment services in this bucket. There's a, um, gray area between what operating subsidies means and what treatment services may mean. So we're trying to work very closely with the state around definitions to, to honestly get as many of the things be able to be paid for in this housing bucket as possible since it is the one with a little bit of a delta. The second bucket is behavioral health services and supports. Um, I probably should do it the other order. So let's do it the other order. Let's go to the, the full service partnership bucket, which is thirty-five percent. Um, includes, uh, mental health services and supportive services. This is basically, the idea is to, um, fund a continuum of full service partnership programs where historically we've thought of full service partnership programs as our most intensive services. They're also have language in there where they contemplate the idea around having stepped down once somebody's successfully supported within a full service partnership program, having an array of services to help them continue to be successful in the community. A full service partnership program can be extremely intensive to the point of irritating for individuals who are, um, in those services because of how many touches that they, that they receive. Um, it would, it's, you know, a lot of time commitment. And so, um, wanting to be able to have an array of services that might be funded in that bucket. The reason why I should have done housing first and full service partnership program because then everything else goes into the third bucket, behavioral health services and supports. Um, they do have a couple of other additional rules about how we use that last thirty-five percent. Fifty-one percent has to be used for early intervention services. And fifty-one percent of the, of the intervention services have to be for people twenty-five years and younger. So there are some additional constraints on how we use those funds. One of the interesting things that we are trying to, um, disentangle with the state is that, um, under Prop One, uh, a larger cut of the original BHSA dollars goes to the state. So it used to be ninety-five percent came to counties, five percent went to the state. Now it's ten percent goes to the state. And for that ten percent going to the state, the state is taking over responsibility for population, which they're now calling popu, I'm sorry, for prevention, which they're now calling population-based prevention. Um, and so what is, where is the line between prevention and early intervention? And so trying to get clarification on that, because we don't want to be duplicative or redundant with what the state's going to roll out in their prevention, um, activities. We want to be very thoughtful and strategic about how we invest our money into this bucket under the early intervention sort of category. And then that's, those are the slides on Proposition One. And so I will keep moving on to, um, CalAim. Uh, there's been a lot of discussion around CalAim. Uh, Cal, uh, CalAim stands for California Advancing and Innovating Medi-Cal. I think normally when you hear about this, you hear it within the context of some major reforms that are happening for our managed care plans. And that, you hear, um, discussion around enhanced care management and community supports, some of the other housing, uh, community support sort of topics. Well, in addition to those.
I, I know we left housing out. I don't know if we want to talk about four point two billion, two, two billion or just general housing buckets on Prop One. My two questions.
Okay.
Do you want to talk briefly on that?
Okay.
Or I can.
Yeah, if you don't mind. So I'll just add to it. I, I know the other piece to Prop One that is coming up a lot. And I know certainly we've had organizations reaching out as, you know, there's the, the six point four billion dollars that's set aside really for all of the, the infrastructure development. And, you know, four point four of that is, is geared toward, um, behavioral health treatment. So some of the things we talked about today and our needs, you know, substance use treatment facilities, um, urgent cares, the, um, residential for subacute. Those are activities that the state set aside four point four billion dollars. Um, counties can apply, our community-based organizations can apply. Um, I, I know there've been a lot of questions and interests from different organizations asking about that. From, from our perspective on, on Sacramento County, we're continuing to focus back to that RAND study and recognize that our, our gaps, um, continue to be in subacute in substance use treatment. Um, services to youth, particularly substance use services to youth would be huge if, if somebody were willing and interested to come in to develop that. So we, um, we're developing our own plans for some submissions for the county. And I know some of our community-based organizations are also developing those plans. Um, the other component to that is, um, the two billion dollar set aside for, um, that's actually the shelter housing. Um, the, we don't know as much about that. We expect fall, that information to be released. Um, that's being administered from, um, Housing Community Development. So we don't necessarily have a, as much optics into how they want to administer that program, what that's going to look like. Um, we're watching that closely, um, for that fall release. Um, recognizing that again, that, that's another huge component. I, it's, I think locally, that's something that we would like to certainly see a lot more investment in recognizing the shortage of, of some of the key shelter beds.
Right. So in addition to the CalAim initiatives that were, um, really involved with our managed care plans, there are some specific, uh, CalAim initiatives for behavioral health. And this is just to make sure that I include this because, uh, I'd be remiss if not to continue to paint the picture of how complex all the changes are that are happening for behavioral health right now. We had a change in how we're required to document our services. That was intended to be more streamlining so that we would be able to take our clinicians and have them focus on the care rather than, um, the paperwork. Um, I think we did make some changes that were in the right direction there, but it's not quite as realized as we were hoping it would be. There still are quite a bit of requirements around documentation, but hopefully it was a step in the right direction. And then, um, the other one that you've all heard, uh, from our contract providers about is payment reform. Um, and we talked about that briefly this morning. So just to make sure that I'm not being remiss in including, um, including that here. The one last part I'll mention is that we, we were, uh, a, uh, a, a partner in helping implement enhanced care management as becoming sort of a hub for enhanced care management for our behavioral health contract providers. One of the populations of focus are those with a serious mental illness or substance use disorder. And rather than making our contract providers each need to contract with all four of our managed care plans, then five managed care plans, we, um, offered and became, uh, a hub in order to help try to, uh, ease the administrative burden for our contract providers in, in doing that. So next amazingly, um, complex additional topic is, um, the mobile crisis benefit. Uh, around the time that Supervisor Kennedy actually introduced the concept of the program which we now call Community Wellness Response Team, this was during the pandemic. Um, uh, the feds, uh, CMS also introduced a similar, I think they heard, uh, they must have watched the board meeting and thought, hey, that's a great idea.
I was first.
You were first. You were. And, um, they, uh, began working on an option for states to opt into a mobile crisis benefit where we would be able to get Medi-Cal federal revenue, um, for mobile crisis services. Um, the state, uh, as fast as they could, um, recognizing everything that was going on during the pandemic, did roll out the mobile crisis benefit. And, um, it's a requirement, counties have to do it. And so we, we are doing it. Um, because they made it a requirement means that the state is, um, funding it for our Medi-Cal beneficiaries. So the nuance I would like to make sure that you're aware of here is that as a result of your investments into our Community Wellness Response Team, you're making this program possible for all residents in Sacramento County, not just Medi-Cal residents. Because the, the, um, the federal, uh, uh, mobile crisis benefit was limited to federal funding for those with Medi-Cal coverage, which makes absolutely no sense when you really think about it. Because we are not going to check somebody's Medi-Cal status before we roll out our mobile crisis response. And so thank you for your, your support and making that available to all of our, um, residents. Our next, um, initiative, which I have not talked to you all about yet, this is an introduction. Um, and a teaser for topics soon to come is, uh, behavioral health. Uh, Behavioral Health Connect. It's, we got an extra help in there. So it's BH Connect. Um, this is, the, the state is trying not to highlight that it is, right? I, I have to say it as it is because this is something that we here in Sacramento County have been looking forward to. Um, they're trying to downplay a little bit the idea that this is the IMD exclusion waiver. So right now, um, under, uh, federal rules, um, it is not possible to use federal funding to pay for any, uh, treatment facilities with more than sixteen beds, which we're all very aware, well aware of. And, um, because here in Sacramento, we have so many beds that fall into that exclusion criteria. So, um, this includes, uh, our, the opportunity to waive that exclusion in, in exchange for having to promise that we will invest significant amount into community-based services in order to help prevent individuals needing those higher level of services. Right now, uh, the, included up there, the main objectives the state has communicated, this is, um, intended to amplify ongoing investments and strengthen the continuum of community-based care. Spark, um, specifically focused, um, with, on children, individuals who are just as involved, individuals experiencing or at risk of homelessness. Um, and then also ensuring, uh, both residential and patient care is high-quality, time-limited, and only used when clinically appropriate. Um, the, the, the state is currently, has their, um, paperwork, uh, their waiver uh, request submitted to the feds, to CMS. And we are waiting to hear, I'm sure they're having conversations, but we as counties are waiting to hear for the, um, news that that waiver is approved and what that looks like, uh, in the, in the end version of it. Um, the state originally identified that they are anticipating that this. The state originally identified that they are anticipating that this could go live as early as. January first, two thousand twenty five, which is just around the corner. The current waiver as it's written includes ability to be able to draw down federal revenue for I M D excluded. Beds, but also requires, so we as a county are going to have to opt in to BH Connect. We are gonna have to make the decision whether or not we want to opt into the BH Connect. The plus side is we're gonna get federal revenue for things we've never gotten federal revenue for. We are then going to need to reinvest that additional revenue in order to stand up and be in compliance. With a number of enhanced community based services. And there's the list of them. And I'm gonna go to the next slide so I can actually provide you some information. Regarding what each of these additional community based services are. So ACT, in fact, so ACT stands for Assertive Community Treatment. And this is basically like F S P, but with just a little bit more intensity. This is extremely. Well defined, evidence based practice in order for you to actually be. Get credit for being an ACT program, we're going to have to do what they call fidelity measures to demonstrate that we're. Doing it as it was intended to do. It is a higher lift than what we're currently doing with F S Ps. I do not. Anticipate we're gonna change all of our F S P slots into ACT. We'll have, but we will need to have ACT as a part of our system that, that will have to be, that would be, have to be. One of the things that we have in our array of services. FACT is forensic assertive community treatment. So basically ACT for those who are justice involved. The next one is. Community based, I forget what C S C stands for, but basically it's first episode psychosis. Too many acronyms. I can't keep track of all of them. First episode psychosis. The good news is, is we are already doing this. We're working and collaborating with UC Davis and their SAC Edapt. Program in order to make this service available to our, to our community members for youth and. Usually you, youth and young adults who are experiencing their initial first episode of psychosis. Another area of community based service that we'll need to provide is transitional rent services. Where for the first time, we would be able to receive federal funding for rent. It will be time limited. We're not gonna, it's not gonna be forever. Probably be like six months that we'd be able to get federal revenue in order to support, support this. And again, the good news is here is that we're already doing this to some extent. We are on the mental health side. We already have our flexible housing. Funds, which you heard about earlier this morning, that we would be able to now get federal revenue for. The next one is supported employment. It's actually an evidence based program. That actually helps for those individuals who are interested, it is one of their treatment goals to actually pursue employment. That we would have supportive employment in order to help get them there. We have already, you as a part of our budget have, have already approved. This in a prior year budget for us to stand this up. And so we were already working towards that. For both transitional rent and supportive employment, they are, they're currently budgeted for under our mental health side of the house. And we would then expand it to also be available under our substance use disorder side of the house. Peer support services, we're already working on that. The one main rule there is that we have to have peer support services. For, they call it forensic specialization. And again, that's peer support services for individuals who are justice involved. And again, the good news is we are also already doing this to some extent in our existing. Programs that are serving the justice involved.
Who's the chair?
Yes, whoever the frost.
Thank you. I have a question. Is there any way to? Are, are all these that are required with this on top of what we're all already doing or are, are we? Trying to evaluate the net outcome after we opt into this? I mean, do we have any way? It's so complicated.
Yeah.
Determine that.
And that's what we're working on. There is a board letter that is, that's under draft right now that will come forward. In the coming months that will basically line that out and basically talk about. The recommendation, the recommendation will be that we opt in because I think that the, the. Benefit of receiving that additional federal revenue is far better. Than the cost of standing up a few new programs. And in some cases, getting federal revenue for some of the existing programs we're already, we're already doing.
There will be that cost benefit analysis. Our, our hope was fall. I think we're still waiting for the state to officially. Give us the, the information we need to be able to bring it to the board to, to weigh that. But definitely that cost benefit analysis will be, will be crucial.
Last two, uh, community health worker is just like in managed care plans. There's a community health worker benefit. This will also allow us and require us to have community health workers in our behavioral health services. And the last one is Clubhouses, which is a national type of program, which is peer. Operated Clubhouses where individuals are able to come and they, it's sort of a self governing sort of approach to. Developing programming. It's very similar to our existing. Community wellness centers that are attached to each one of our core sites. So again, we, we're already almost there in terms of. This, this one, we, we will wanna do some evaluation because it would require us to make some. Shifts in how we're, how we're doing our community wellness services. So that's the array of services that we have to implement. I, I was trying, in, in my attempt at going through each of those. I was really trying to communicate that to a large extent, we're doing a lot of this already. And to, we're gonna be able to actually draw down more federal revenue because these are now going to be Medi-Cal billable services. So I'm, I'm really thinking that we're, it's, this is not probably gonna be as big of a lift for us as. In comparison with how much additional revenue that, that we anticipate we'd be able to get. So moving right along to the next big complicated initiative, we have Senate Bill forty three. So as a reminder, Senate Bill forty three expands the difference of gravely, gravely disabled to include inability to care for their. For their own selves, their housing, clothing, or, or physical healthcare. That current, that grave disability definition is already part of the fifty one fifty definition for those with a mental health. Disorder. This is now expanding it to include those with a severe substance use disorder. This was originally signed into law and could have gone live as early as January one, two thousand twenty four. Having come to the board prior to that, we presented that the, the law did provide provisions. To allow counties to defer the implementation of SB forty three until January one, two thousand twenty six. We are very much aware of the, I'm not ready for that one yet. So I wanna tell you, I wanna tell you about what work we've done. The, the board did get defer implementation to January first, two thousand twenty five. And so during the time since the, the, we last met with the board on this topic till now, we have done a substantial amount of work. Some of it, we have to acknowledge a lot of partnership around this. We have a local work group that is working with our sister agencies within the county. There's a regional meeting that we have partnered with that is talking about how we implement this. Regionally across counties, including our hospital partners. As well as other counties in the, both the hospital partners in the area as well as our county partners in the area. And then there's also some state level conversations that have been having around how we would, we would implement this. So we've benefited from a lot of really thoughtful, smart conversations. Of course, we were part of those, but really have to acknowledge how much partnership there has been around working out the various. Logistics of how we would implement this. The first area where I feel like we have made some substantive progress. Is how do you, how do you define this severe substance use disorder? What is this? And how do we communicate that to community? How do we communicate that with law enforcement? How do we, how do we sort of operationalize what that looks like? So the, the, the. The criteria that have been developed. The, the law actually for the first time, because it does not require a mental health diagnosis. It does, as it relates to substance use, does specifically talk about a severe substance use disorder. And that is defined as in the DSM four, the Diagnostic Statistic Manual, which is. Obviously very specific. And so how do we help folks understand what that would be? So basically in trying to translate or interpret how we would implement this, we took what's in the DSM. And changed it into language that we think more people would be able to understand. And basically these are the eleven criteria that are defined under the severe S U D. S U D diagnosis. And basically if you, the way severe is defined is if you have six or more of these. Observable symptoms, then you would meet the criteria for. For grave disability, for a severe S U D. Now you, it's not just you have a severe S U D, you also have to meet the criteria. For grave disability, which is inability to care for your own food, shell, shelter, clothing or physical healthcare.
I'm real concerned about this because it leaves room for. A personal judgment. It's not, you know, either you. In a fifty one fifty, if you try to commit suicide or, you know, you're a danger to yourself or others. But this leaves room for. I guess opinions or a personal judgment. And so one of the things that they did with the Laura's Law was they made sure that there was a process by which. There were many levels of evaluation to, toward that. Toward that end. It wasn't just, you know, someone decided that someone. Who lost her husband, she got depressed and all of a sudden she's gonna be locked up. You know, because she's not doing things the same way she used to. It's not a personal judgment. It's a process. Is that the conversation?
There, there will be a process for this as well because it will be subject to the same processes that other fifty one fifties and fifty. It's a whole continuum goes fifty one fifty, fifty one fifty one, fifty one fifty two. It's like the, based on how long you're being held. You have to go through all these different steps. And each one of those steps where it changes. There has to be. A hearing that includes a patient's rights advocate and a hearing officer, which is basically. Equivalent to a judge. Lawyers can tell me if I'm saying it wrong, but it's basically, it is basically a court process. That, that there's a patient's right, there's a county council, I believe, that represents it. And then there's an opportunity for that hearing officer to make a determination whether or not there's enough to justify continuing that hold. You wanna add anything?
So county council, I'm Deputy County Council Corey Bright. I'm standing in for Lisa Travis today because she's, she's got a personal commitment. Our probate team handles these hearings for the county. Typically, they also have, the patient will have a public defender representative. Both sides have access to sort of the overall circumstances in the later stages of that hold. For a fifty one fifty hold, it's a seventy two hour hold. I believe the hearings kick in. Late, later in time for that. There's also, this, I also wanna acknowledge, this is a complex scheme. There's Reese hearings. Which is usually what you would be looking at. Our office does appear on those for several of the facilities that are here in town. And then some of those are privately represented as well, but in that same situation, the patient is given a representative. And there is an opportunity to sort of voice and name that. And then separately, they, if it were to go further on in that. Like the, to trigger an L P S conservatorship, either temporary or permanent, our office handles those as well. But there is a very heavily staged legal continuum, all rooted within the welfare and institution code. As well as those components. Does anyone have any other questions?
No, I'll, I'll just say that, you know, in my previous life, I had a DSM manual that was dog eared on my desk at all times. And, and I will say that, you know, yes, there is a certain amount of subjectivity. There always is in these cases. But there's a great deal of due process that goes into it and there's a lot of guardrails. So I'm uncomfortable with it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
That's a question. So thank, I appreciate this discussion about SB forty three. I mean, I think it, I, I don't think it's gonna be as much of a fantasy as a lot of people think. But I think there are some individuals out on the streets, many of us hear complaints about them who were clearly suffering from some kind of. Addiction or they're in the throes of, of, of drug use or something. And I, I think this is. Meant for some of those, some of those populations, some of those folks who wouldn't otherwise qualify, qualify for some other interventions. I'm curious though, when it comes to, and I, I understand and appreciate that there will have to be a lot of education within the law enforcement community about this. But so if law enforcement takes someone in under a fifty one fifty, under broader criteria post SB forty three. They would have to take them to one of the CSUs, just like they typically currently do, or ED. Is that correct?
That is.
Is there any mechanism where they could, a, a drop off place could be one of the, the cribs or something? Is that, is that even possible to pursue that or that they're not, they're not at the level where they would be able to accept? Someone under this broader.
So, thank you.
So how about that, huh? That was not, that was not orchestrated.
So that is another topic that we've been talking about is, so now what? So somebody's placed on a hold, now what? And so, uh, working in advocacy, we did have some conversations with the state around this. The state is largely remaining silent and saying, you guys figure this out. L P S is a county responsibility, not a state thing. The one area where they did provide some guidance, not guidance, it's basically restating what existing guidance there is. Is regarding what facilities can be, can accept individuals with a serio- serious substance use disorder. And so this was published as a behavioral health information notice. There's a reference to it. Basically, they concluded that the locations that can accept people with on, with only a severe substance use disorder. Is general acute hospitals with, it's a technical thing, distinct part units providing chemical dependency coverage. Or an acute psychiatric hospital with, again, the technical distinct part units providing chemical dependency coverage. Or crisis stabilization units. Those are the three areas where they said, though, one other thing that they also clarified though. Is that for individuals who have a co-occurring mental health disorder, they can be served at psychiatric health facilities. Which is the type of facility that we have. We don't have any of those. We have CSUs. We don't have the distinct parts facility.
And, and to answer, I think the other piece to that, we, we see like crib as a really good resource for this. And one of the things that we've been working with, with that team on is, is kind of what type of certification, if it's a CSU. Or other types of, other types of licensing to be able to leverage this. Because tho- those are the right types of placements. I'll share when you look at this, certainly the, the group that. Across the community has some of the most concern about this are our hospitals, which is. If we have a bunch of people coming into the EDs and we already know we're working to try and address A P O T issues. Ambulance patient offload time issues, this could compound that problem. And so as many alternative locations that are able to handle, somebody who might be detoxing and need. A higher level of medical care is, is gonna be the important pieces here.
So, so Tim, i- if, if there was an elected official in the community who said, all you need is a bed, that's probably simplistic when it comes to. The need to develop infrastructure.
I would agree with that.
Thank you.
And then the last bit on this one is that we are watching some pending legislation, SB twelve thirty eight for where that might land. Because that's going to also have further information regarding which facilities are eligible for this. And then the la- the last slide on SB forty three is that. We have been watching, so out of all counties, there are only five counties that did not defer. Implementation to January first, two thousand twenty six. We are one of those five. So three of those five. We are one of those five, so three of those five uh, deferred until January first, two thousand twenty five, which is coming up here. And then the other two went live, January first, two thousand twenty four, so they're already live. So in um, obviously, a logical question is, how's it going for them? So in talking with them, we're seeing that uh, initial trends show very few clients are meeting the disability criteria to S U D alone. And are likely to be lea- be released, for those who are meeting the criteria for S U D alone, they are likely to be released following the seventy two hour hold. Those who have uh, extended involuntary holds have majority of the time been found to have co-occurring symptoms. That's often the case when we see individuals, if you have a severe substance use disorder, chances are you have a co-occurring mental health challenge of some kind. And then the other piece is, uh, we're hearing that conservatorship due to S U D alone are um, likely categorized as probate rather than L P S um, due to organic medical issues resulting from long-term chronic substance use, which um, is, is a conversation for, so today, we're not coming here with uh, for a decision. That's obviously not the point of today. Today, the, the point was to give an update, let you know where, where we're at. Um, on the one hand, we know we have advocates that very much want this implemented ASAP. Some of them probably here in the audience today. Um, and then we also know that our hospitals are probably the ones that are expressing the most anxiety or concern regarding implementation of S P forty three. And then the last uh, um, consideration, just to make sure that it's stated for, for everybody to have on their mind, is um, that the surrounding counties around us are, as of right now, all planning on going live January first, two thousand twenty six, which would be different than our timeline if we went live January first, two thousand twenty five. Not saying that that's not possible, but I just will flag that I cannot predict how the differences between counties will play out. So even today, those differences play out in unpredictable ways. We recently had a fifty one fifty at um, Mercy San Juan, uh, individual who was on a fifty one fifty and there was c- concern, consideration coming from their home county of Buick County, which isn't even one of our surrounding counties, around how that fifty one fifty was being handled. And so there, I just can't predict how the differences might um, impact us um, considering if there's different policies in different counties. And I will pause there and see.
And I, I'll just add too, I know when we took this to the board last December, um, the intent was, and the, the request from the board then was to provide kind of two updates. One is what we're, the first one of those today, to highlight wh- where we're at, kind of the factors with S P forty three. And then we wanted to come back in um, October or early November, really to um, to bring to the board more or less a, a recommendation of, do we continue with the January one implementation? Or, or do we defer a little longer? I think when we've seen these, wh- when we've seen kind of the experience of other counties, that gives us confidence that I, I don't think we're going to see floodgates open. And, and I think that's, that's a positive thing. Um, similar to what the conversation we had earlier on nine eight eight, part of it's going to be an education piece, part of it's going to be a, a tool of how, how best do you want to start to um, to use this new tool. Um, my, I think the biggest fear outside of what it could do to ambulance patient offload is those ones that are going to potentially cycle through, is they meet the criteria today, they get picked up on a fifty one fifty, they detox in an E D, they get released, and we have this cycle. Um, what I would love to do and what we're, what we're talking about then is, how could we identify who are the, the higher utilizers, higher risk people? And um, at the point that they're about to be released from the E D, that hold is expiring, we need to link them into housing or, you know, temporary housing to start to um, use that a- as a way to hopefully compel them into engaging in treatment services. We know from our, our stats across our unsheltered population, if somebody's in housing, they are far more likely to say, yes, I'm, I'm willing to engage in services. So I think that's going to be a cr- crucial tool here, that I think we can leverage some of our B H B H, um, our bridge housing dollars that we're building up to be able to hold a few spots there and say, we have somebody who's coming off this, this fifty one fifty. Let's, you know, link them into housing if they're willing to also start to engage in, in treatment and services.
I just want to say, your point is well taken, Tim. Uh, it could have an impact far beyond the medical scope. Um, it could impact our whole continuum, really. And I also wonder, you know, when, when we go, w- w- once we go down that path, you know, are there nuances that can be interpreted within it that weren't intended? Uh, unintended consequences, like then, you know, that can it, do you hear what I'm saying? Do you understand what I'm saying? I, I mean, it's not a cut and dry, it's a judgment.
We are a.
How far will their minds go with it?
Well, we're a system and you pull on one, one s- string and you impact other areas, if that's what I hear that you're saying.
That, and also, you know, once we are down the road with, you know, um, severe um, drug, you know, issues. What else can you apply? What else can be applied to that definition, the definition of that policy? For who fits within it? Yeah, saying it very well.
No, I, I hear what you're saying and I, I think to Corey's um, earlier comment, we just really want to ensure that people's due process rights are respected and we take that very seriously. And also just ensure that we're monitoring the impacts on the total system over time. And if we have to, you know, go to the state with advocacy for other things, if we have to um, create other types of service structures, we're, we're going to be watching that closely and, and we'll be keeping you apprised.
Thank, thank you, Chair, and I appreciate the concerns of my colleague, but I also recognize this as an important tool in order to, to perhaps advance the conversation for folks who, who may not be in the right frame of mind to, to take their own health and wellbeing into account. Um, I believe this is the first report back we've had since we uh, heard this item. Are we uh, on target to go live, as you said, uh, in January of uh, twenty twenty five?
At, at this point, we are a- anticipating and expecting that if, if, if the, if when we come back for our final report, that we could go live on, on January one. What I, what we'll highlight there is again, some of the, the unknowns primarily to our ambulance patient offload times and also if we're that far ahead of our regional partners. Um, but they no- notice, noting that the board said, January twenty twenty five, behavioral health has been preparing for that. There is going to be a, a lot of education that we need to do to our law enforcement partners. Um, a- again, this is um, nothing to be taken lightly in terms of, of these types of holds. And so we want to make sure all of our system partners are prepared for that. And so I think over the next two months, what we're going to be doing is really going back to our system partners, hospitals, law enforcement. And really understanding from them that if this does go January, you know, wh- what, what are your biggest concerns and how can we help mitigate that? I mean, that'll form the basis then of when we come back to the board in a couple of months with um, kind of a, a recommendation and a board final, you know, what date would you like us to go?
Great. And then um, if not at that initial go-live time, are we also anticipating uh, expanding our own capacity relative to say-sobering centers? Or uh, C S U's or, or acceptable alternate destinations?
Alternate, alternate destinations would be the.
Yeah, alternate destinations are, our triage to alternate destination policy is going live in December.
Okay.
And we are still moving forward with that pathway, which will be uh, our goal is again, provide as many avenues as possible for, for EMS and law enforcement. Um, I think from the report earlier, some of our C S U's are actually under, uh, underutilized right now. So we're, we're not as concerned on, on the C S U side. Um, I think looking at things like the, the crib and the, the second crib at Stockton Boulevard, those I, I see as critical types of resources that would be um, helpful in this case.
Great, thank you.
All right, so our next, um, this is, this is one complex initiative after another. Our next uh, initiative that we're going to talk about is uh, Care Act. So Senate Bill thirteen thirty eight, and this is another one of the governor's initiatives, um, created the, the Care Act or Care Court um, process. And um, there are some counties that went live uh, last year in Octoberish. Uh, and it was about what, seven, they call them cohort one counties that have already gone live. And then we are part of cohort two, so we are slated to go live in December of uh, two thousand twenty four. And we're working very uh, um, we're working very hard to be ready for that implementation. We have had lots of meetings with our justice and social service partners. Um, internally, uh, we've been recruiting for our Care Court staff that would need to be able to actually respond to the petitions. And um, working on developing the, the processes, this is requires a great deal of um, collaboration with the courts. So courts have been working on developing the, the, the difference from assisted outpatient treatment is for assisted outpatient treatment, the referrals come to behavioral health. And for Care Court, the petition goes to the court for the court to then um, evaluate and send to us to order an assessment. Um, so it's a different routing mechanism. And um, so the courts are basically def- identifying what their processes are going to be. Uh, they've, they've identified and talked about uh, um, how they're going to be utilizing their self-help center in order to help support individuals who are interested in applying petitions and so forth. Um, so just as a reminder around uh, what Care Court is, uh, that's very specific about who's eligible. It says uh, individuals who are eighteen years of, of age or older diagnosed with schizophrenia spectrum or other psychotic disorders, who are not stabilized with ongoing voluntary treatment and unlikely to survive in the community without supervision. And then it's very specific about who can file a petition. So you have to be one of those categories up there um, in order to file a petition. And then finally, it talks about the Care Court process. One of the uh, factors that, in hearing how other counties have implemented this, there are some misunderstandings regarding what Care Court is. Um, one of the most common misunderstandings, so just to clarify, Care Court does not permit the court to compel individuals into treatment, cannot make them do treatment, cannot compel them to take medications or make them take medications. So that seems like that there is a un- misunderstanding at times around what Care Court process is capable do- full of doing. I will say, what we're hearing from those cohort one counties is that they are seeing some success around becoming more aware or about individuals who have not historically been self-seeking behavioral health care. They're not personally saying, hey, I recognize that I need help and I'm going to go pursue that help. They're, they're being brought more aware, um, they're becoming aware to the behavioral health system because somebody else is bringing them and making the system, behavioral health, aware that this individual needs our services. And of course, that's what we're here for and that's what we want to do, is we want to serve these folks. So I see that as a benefit, that we might be able to become more aware of individuals who are in need of our services and can benefit from our services. And so I'm, I'm really looking forward to identifying what different strategies we might be able to identify, working very closely with our courts. We've talked about having behavioral health resources in those self-help centers. So not just, not just, not just court staff that are teaching them how to write the paperwork, but actually having behavioral health um, experts uh, that are, and resources that are available in order to help support individuals, because either, some of them won't qualify for these very specific eligibility criteria. And then if, wouldn't it be great if we had behavioral health resources there to say, hey, you don't have, you want services, let's go this way and we'll get you linked up with services, you don't just, this is not the o- only option. There's other ways to get involved with behavioral health services. So um, very, uh, I think we're making good progress towards being ready to implement in December. And that's it on Care Court. So now I will hand it to Kelly for a conversation around our increased bed capacity. A microphone.
There, oh, thank you, appreciate that. So supervisor Desmond mentioned earlier the RAN study, so this ties into um, that mentioned earlier uh, where uh, the RAN study identified a couple of areas where we had gaps. Um, you know, one area was in our subacute, specifically our mental health rehabilitation uh, centers, uh, which we refer to as M H R Cs, because we love our acronyms. Um, uh, M H R Cs are locked residential facilities for individuals on L P S conservatorship. Um, typically, there's, these are folks who have been in and out of hospitalization or jail, have had multiple incarcerations, struggling with um, community tenure. Um, are typically um, unable to, to care for themselves. And so this is an intervention that usually um, works best for these folks to keep them safe. And as you can see, um, looking um, from two thousand twenty one up to this current past year, we increased our utilization of this resource. Um, we went from a hundred and thirty one beds to a hundred and seventy five. In doing this, we, we've increased um, uh, um, not only utilizing our existing facilities, but actually increased um, partnerships. Um, uh, one, uh, one partner we added um, was unique in that they served a population that was unmet. We um, we met with our public guardians office and our um, adult correctional health folks around a population of folks on Murphy's conservatorship. This is a unique conservatorship for individuals who have been deemed um, an eminent threat to the community. It's a different type of hold. And these are folks that are oftentimes hard to place in facilities. And these were folks kind of stuck at the jail, not a good place for these folks to be. And um, oftentimes, these are folks hard to place in mental health re- rehabilitation centers directly from jail to the treatment facility. So uh, in the Central Valley, there's a program there that we, we learned about. We went to go uh, check out their facility, met with the, the folks that run it and entered into a contract. At the time, I think we had twenty individuals, some folks had been there for maybe a year, two years, long time in the jail. Um, I'm happy to say that today, we have less than, I think, ten folks in, in the jail and we're, we've been able to have folks move out um, quickly, um, being able to use this resource. In addition, we added and implemented an augmented boarding care program. Um, this augmented boarding care program is leveraged as a step down from M H R Cs to allow um, a continuum of care, so that we can step folks down, so that we can add more folks into the M H R C. Because the idea is that M H R Cs are transitional. We ideally wa- want folks to be able to return home and, and live in least restrictive environments when they're feeling better. Um, and so that has been um, increasing in terms of capacity. As you can see, we started out ra- ramping up that first year, we had fifty seven beds and, and uh, this last year, we, we increased to a hundred and six. Um, another area, um, I think Ed mentioned it, um, as he was um, talking about our substance use continuum is residential substance use beds. And so this has been an area of focus. Uh, we've certainly been outreach-ing um, to our substance use providers to increase our residential bed uh, capacity. And as you can see, um, we certainly have um, in the pipeline, a number of beds that we're, we're thrilled to be able to add. And so looking at um, two thousand twenty five, twenty six, we are going to increase from uh, this past year from a hundred and ninety six to four hundred and seventy two. So we're really um, uh, looking forward to, to um, having these additional beds to be able to serve, serve our community. Um, we have a huge need uh, for residential beds, particularly for our male, male uh, bed population. So happy to share that with you today.
And the other, other part I just want to um, emphasize is that we believe in um, uh, treating people in the least restrictive environment. That, that is entirely our goal all the way through this. Uh, we don't want people to be um, at a higher level of restricted placement for longer than they need to be. And so when, that's one of the things that we, I found when, when I, I first got here was that our length of stay in our psychiatric hospitals was longer than it should be on average. And so this has given us an opportunity to uh, really uh, shorten that length of stay within that psychiatric health facility, step them down to a mental health rehabilitation center. When they're good and ready to, to, to step down, we have our augmented boarding care. The idea being that we have people in those more restricted levels of care for the least amount of time that is necessary in order to support them in that environment. All right, and then uh, last one, um, behavioral health continuum infrastructure program. Uh, we, we've talked a lot about this one, and so just first of all, to do a recap um, and sort of give you a status update on how these projects, these various projects are going. So originally, this, the whole point behind uh, behavioral health continuum infrastructure program was to fund the, the construction of. was to fund the, the construction of and renovation acquisition of additional bed capacity, treatment bed capacity within communities. We referenced the RAN report already and have identified and talked about what our priorities are. And those have remained our priorities all the way through MHRCs, substance use disorder, residential treatment and youth. And both on the mental health side and on the substance use side. So in round three, we applied for and successfully were awarded that twenty three point five million dollars for a mental health rehabilitation center. We have been working on, on trying to do that on a county, a county owned property. We, we have, we, we have since was originally awarded till now. As you see across tire construction field, the, the price tag went significantly up. And so we're, we're not going to be able to move forward with it on the county property that we originally identified. And we're working very closely with a community-based organization in order to identify solution in order to salvage it and keep it moving forward. And we hope to come back before you very soon regarding that action.
And I'll just add, yeah, I, I feel we're really close with the state. It's, it's an unusual circumstance to transition this grant award. The state's actually been really cooperative working with us. And Corey and County Council has been going back and forth with the state's third-party vendor that administers this. Our plan is it really will need to go in either, we have a placeholder right now for September, may end up needing to be October, assuming everything can align that this will come to the Board of Supervisors.
And then for round four, we applied for and were awarded twenty one point eight million dollars for a youth psychiatric health facility and crisis stabilization unit. I'm, I'm not going to always say that. I'm just saying our youth facility. And I will, I am happy to report that that one does seem to be on track. It came in a little bit over budget, but it's not like drop dead over budget. It, it seems like it's going to be able to keep moving forward. And I'm very optimistic that, that that one's going to be a great new resource for our community. For round, for round five, we partnered with Wellspaced Health. They did the application, I shouldn't say partner, they, they did the application. But we did, we did commit to and agree to a hundred and fifty beds at that new facility that's coming online. So very, very excited. So those are really our three main priority areas, right? We had MHRCs, we had youth facility, we had SUD residential. So we're very glad that we are be able to move forward all of our priority areas. And now with the additional bond funding that Tim was referencing earlier for additional treatment facilities, we, we still hope to further, we probably don't need any more youth, mental health facilities. We could use more youth SUD facilities. And then MHRCs, we're considering how we might continue to work in that direction. And of course, we could again use some additional SUD residential treatment. Thank you.
Okay. I, I do have a question going back because we talked about what CalAim is and what it does. But, but I, I get questions from some of our partners about the financing. You know, is, am I right that we provide the services and then we build and manage care plans for that service?
We, we provide the service and you're right that we build, but we build a state department of healthcare.
Are we getting that reimbursement?
Wait, are, were you talking about enhanced care management?
Yeah.
Oh, enhanced care management. Yes, we build the managed care.
Right.
My bad. And then we are having challenges.
Yeah. I, I think what you're asking.
And now I'm kind of channeling Amanda Thomas here.
Yes. Which, what we've noticed and I'll share, we've been talking to, to others counties about this as well. In addition to providers, we know there, there are two main issues with CalAim. One is reimbursement rates. In a lot of cases, the reimbursement rate is just not enough to account for the array of services that are being provided. So whatever those programs are, nonprofit county, we're having to augment that with other program funds. The second piece that we are aware of, and we've been talking to our consultant through the, the health authority to try and figure out how do we leverage this and bring this up to the plans, is there are instances where some of our providers are owed months or even over a year of billing from managed care plans. I, I don't know offhand how, how long outstanding some of our billing is. I know I had asked the team to, to do the analysis, but I just don't necessarily have it in front of me. I can follow up with you, but I do know we've seen a delay in getting billing back from the managed care plans as well.
And I'll just add one more thing. So ECM flows really two different ways for folks with behavioral health issues. We are the hub. And so I think that helps our providers because we can sort of take the hit and wait a little bit longer for payment. On the homeless side, for folks who don't, don't come through our behavioral health, the managed care plans contract directly with our providers in the community. And we're finding that to be even more challenging in terms of, in terms of payment length and all of that. So.
And so I would like to follow up on that because I'm glad that the providers are, you know, we, we have to make sure that our providers are taken care of and made whole. But, you know, I don't necessarily think we need to continue to take the hit indefinitely. All right. Thank you.
Oh, can, can I go back? There was one topic I did want to bring to your attention when we were talking about BHSA, Behavioral Services Act. And that is, I think it's important for you to be aware that under the, so I told you that goes live July first, two thousand twenty six. But in addition, it also makes changes in regulation that requires counties to have a behavioral health commission. That's, and that's required to go live January first, two thousand twenty five. So we have begun conversations with our mental health board and our alcohol drug advisory board in having conversations about what should that look like for Sacramento County? And so we are bringing in, in a facilitator in order to help us work on what that should look like and sort of get us all on the same page about what that should look like. I believe you'll start hearing about some of that conversation from your staff as, as our two boards, their leadership is meeting with your chiefs of staff and wanted to let you know that we do have a process in place where we're bringing in a facilitator in order to help us work through what, what do we need to do to get from where we are to where we're going to be in compliance with what the law says.
Okay. Any other questions? We do have a member of the public that'd like to speak on this item, Nancy Brenelson.
Nancy Brenelson, representing family advocates for individuals with serious mental illness. It won't be a surprise to you that our group is very supportive of a number of these initiatives, collaborative courts, assertive community treatment, Care Court, SB forty three diversion, et cetera. So guilty as charged, you know, as Dr. Quist said, because we're desperate to, to get our family members treated. And unfortunately, the behavioral health system in this state and in this country is designed to let people get horribly, horribly ill before we have a mechanism to get them into treatment that isn't completely voluntary. I want voluntary treatment. I prefer it. We all do, least restrictive environment. So that's why we're looking at these possibilities. But I, we agree it's terribly complex and terribly, lots of questions still to answer. But there's a theme here and that is integration. So, you know, Dr. Quist just brought up the issue of the, the alcohol board and mental health board, alcohol and drug advisory board. There are a number of other board, you know, groups across the county, the public health advisory board, the, and, and different departments. I have the privilege of working with the Public Safety and Justice Agency Advisory Committee. And then there's the Community Review Commission. So we really need to look at, and I, our group would encourage you as supervisors to help figure out how we bring all of these groups together to come up with comprehensive integrated solutions. I do think that the PSJA Advisory Committee that brings folks together.
Can you wrap up? Can, can you wrap up?
Is a good model. We think it's time to begin visioning how this integrated and comprehensive system can be put together, regardless of having some of these questions unanswered. And we would encourage you as a board of supervisors to continue this kind of process to do that.
Thank you. Thank you. That takes us to off-agenda public comments. We do have one speaker slip and that's Jim York.
Thank you Supervisor. I'm Jim York. I'm an alcoholic. I've been clean and sober since January twenty second, nineteen eighty two. And I wanted to socialize a couple of ideas with all of you. First of all, I want to thank you, esteemed board colleagues, my community colleagues, phenomenal ideas. My wife is from Mexico, I have to say. And when she's very moved by different presentations or ideas or things, she says, my heart is full. That's my beautiful Ruthie back there. Today, I'm saying my brain is full. You, and there's limited capacity up here. So, but I want to say thank you for the work that you're doing. It's very powerful to me. And I will have to say, I'm retired vice president of a large career school where I was a VP of Leadership for over eighty campuses across the nation. I've since retired in April and I have an association with one of the tiny home facilities on the Florin Road of about a hundred twenty five capacity. Knowing that I have the qualifications to talk about AA and NA, I've actually brought AA into that facility and I'm having three meetings a week. So one of the things I discovered, and I, I have to say, and I know I'm limited for time, otherwise Supervisor Kennedy is going to give me that sign again. But I, I'm saying it's starting to work. And the idea that I want to socialize with all of you is from this boots-on-the-ground guy. I'm the guy that has to get in there. I've got, I know I have got PhD courses, not like all of the brains in this room, but my PhD is in sobriety and I know what it means. I know how to do it. And when I go into these meetings, we've done it eight weeks now. And when I hold, I ask people to hold hands, how many are sober today? Last week, sixteen names came up, sixteen hands. The week before, twelve hands. On Wednesday, ten out of twelve hands. Now, can I prove that they're all clean and sober? They are that day, but I can't prove anything beyond that. But the point I'm making is, what I'm discovering is that yes, you can lead a, a horse to water, but you cannot make a drink, but you've got to let them know where the water is. And it's got to be consistent and it's got to be redundant. It's got to be every single day. It's got to be reminder every day. And that's my commitment to be in this tiny home facility. My offer to you is as you're going through all of these very powerful things, use me. Let me help you. And I can go to meetings and I can bring AA into your facility. I've already checked with the, you know, the, the AA folks. And I'm doing everything that's legal according to AA standards and NA standards. So again, Jim York, remember that name? You'll always remember the guy who introduced himself as an alcoholic, that's for sure. Supervisor, thank you so much.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you for the work you're doing in Florin Road. Okay, that's the last card I have. That takes us to county executive comments.
Thank you Supervisor. I just wanted to say thank you to the board and giving us this opportunity to have this kind and a comprehensive look at behavioral health services. I hope this met the mark of what you were looking for, for a retreat. We've, we've talked a lot about the current and exciting things that we're doing now, but also what is, is coming in the future and the complexities of the things that are coming in the future. You'll be seeing us come back to talk to you about the SB forty three, the B chip grant and some of the capital projects, Care Courts and of course Prop one and amongst many other things. I guess at the end of the day, I would just like to say, I'm so incredibly proud of the team that we have. Excuse me, the team that we have currently at Sacramento County. Their passion and innovation and commitment to providing behavioral health services to the community is, is second to none. And I think, I think Ryan started off and said that the other communities are, or the other counties are envy of their ability, our ability to come speak with you today. I, I hope that they're also envy of us and the great and fantastic team we have. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I could not agree more. Thank you all for what you do. That takes us to supervisor comments. Any, of course, Mr. Desmond.
Well, I was going to say how wonderful this was today, Supervisor Kennedy, but maybe I'll rethink that. But no, but thank, I just want, I do want to thank you Supervisor Kennedy because you have such a passion for this. This, this means your leadership is just.
I'm going to give you three minutes.
When it comes, yeah. So I, I just think this has been great. It's a lot more. Every time I, we talk about behavioral health, I, I feel more confused when I leave than when I came in the room. I think next year, our board retreat should be on maybe federal income tax or something, something a little simpler. But, but I, I just, I, I am, I am confident that Sacramento County dealing with these intractable social issues, homelessness, behavioral health, we, we are making progress. We are, we are grappling, certainly grappling with a lot of changes at the state that certainly don't make it simpler. But I appreciate all of your, your hard work to grapple with that and, and appreciate your work with the success we've made. And to Stephanie, Sherry, Kelly, Ed and Anatha, thank you very much for, for being here and for the work you do every day. It is among the most important work we do in Sacramento County. So thank you.
Thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Frost.
I just also want to thank Supervisor or Chair Kennedy for bringing us here today. And I want to thank the clerk staff for putting this together so beautifully for all of us and all the presenters who, you guys are experts, but you're more than that. You have a heart and I always, Dr. Quist, you really have a heart. I love your compassion for humanity and what you put into your work. It, it means a lot. But I also want to acknowledge our behavioral health youth advisory board for the beautiful presentation that they gave today. So thank you, everyone. It was very informative.
Thank you to my colleagues. It was a lot of information, but I appreciate you hanging in there. And again, to the clerk of the board staff, thanks for all you did to make this possible. So we're adjourned.